Right, well, it is six o'clock and we have a quorum and we have Jess on Zoom and trustee Erica Sparhawk, Mayor Protem, actually Erica said she'll be a little bit late due to some kids sporting events tonight. I'm gonna start off with our favorite part of the month, which is Students of the Month, so I'm gonna move myself over here and call each student up one at a time and parents can get pictures and all that fun stuff if you'd like. All right. Hardest part is not tripping over all these chords. We have that mic in case any grandparents or anybody's watching on Zoom. So, we will get started. So with each student, I'll just call you up and you can stand here and then I'll read some very nice things about you from your teachers and then let you sit back down. So our first student of the month of the award goes to Marcus Castro Ambrosia. Marcus here? Okay, we'll come back to Marcus. Next student of the month is for Cade Mason. Come on up, Cade. You can stand right here next to me, Cade, and we can look out that way at everybody. Okay, tell us a little bit about yourself. What school do you go to?
I go to C M S.
Okay, and what grade are you in?
Fifth.
Fifth grade. All right, here's some really nice things your teacher said about you. They said, "Cade is very thoughtful of others. Every morning at the beginning of school, he takes time to hold the door for all students to enter. He is enthusiastic about learning and is willing to try new things. He puts a smile on all of our faces at Carbondale Middle School." Congratulations, Cade. And there is your certificate. All right, our next student of the month is Santiago Cruz. Santiago here? All right. And Santiago, what school do you go to?
I'm Crystal River.
Crystal River. What grade are you in? Third grade, okay. Here's what your teacher said about you. They said, "Santiago is a wonderful friend, student, and leader. He is empathetic and helpful with peers. Santiago can be seen with his peers explaining what he knows to try and help them understand. He shares ideas and gives examples to meet his friends where they are. Santiago is respectful to all teachers and strives to do his best every single day. I continue to be impressed by the way Santiago interacts with the world around him, doing his best and inspiring others to do their best." Congratulations. All right, our next student of the month is Benjamin Robison. To mom, Jess. You can wave to her in that camera. All right, Benjamin, what school do you go to? And what grade are you in? All right. Here's what your teachers had to say about you. They said, "Ben has really been working hard to be super productive in the classroom. He is a good role model for other students." Congratulations. All right, and our next student of the month is Christopher Fulton. What school and grade are you?
I'm in, I go to Rossmasuri and I'm in sixth.
All right. You wanna hear some nice things your teacher said to say? They said, "Christopher's academic games have been tremendous and worth celebrating this year. He is positive, upbeat, and wants to learn as much as possible." Good job, Christopher. Congratulations. Did Marcus make it? All right, did we miss anybody? Sometimes we miss a certificate. Okay, well, thank you all for being here. Is Raleigh here? Do you wanna do a picture? Raleigh will do a picture of the Students of the Month for the Soopra Sun out in the lobby. We're gonna carry on with our meeting. You're welcome to stay, but it's also okay if you just came for that and you wanna go. Thank you and congratulations to all those students. Hey, we can start the formal part of the meeting with roll call.
Ben Bonfoc.
Here.
Chris Hassig. Ross Krebs.
Here.
Colin Laird. Christina Montemeyer.
Here.
Jess Robison.
Here.
Sparhawk.
Okay, and Erica should be here, not too long. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which consists of tree board member appointment for Meredith Bullock, environmental board youth member appointment for Oliver Skagan, 2024 liquor license renewal for The Goat Kitchen and Bar, accounts payable for November 12th, public arts commission member appointment for Frank Nadell, and the wastewater treatment plant blower replacement procurement process. So that's approving a contract from a bid, I believe, is how I read that. Okay. Any questions or items to pull for further discussion?
Curious, did we, you have any discussion in the tree board about having two members of the same household on that board? Is that a concern at all, or?
It hasn't been brought up to my knowledge and, I mean, if that, we can certainly pull it if we want to.
I think it's all right.
Talk about it. I mean, I think, I think at this point, on some of these boards, it's the more, more folks we have to help spread the word, no matter how, how it goes. It's, I think it'd be a different story if we had fifteen people knocking on the door.
Yeah.
I think there's still, I believe there's, are still a spot or two available, so.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, motion by Chris, second by Colin. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Good question, though, Chris. I hadn't picked that up, but do know Dan Bullock is our tree board chair and, and primary advocate, so should've picked that up. Next item is public comment. If you have an issue you'd like to address the board on, you can approach the podium. New Lynn was gonna be here to talk to us about her work with Carbondale homeless assistance. You have about three minutes and you can address your comments to me.
All right, we're gonna talk fast.
All right.
First, thank you and thank you to the town for supporting Carbondale Homeless Assistance. This year was a challenging one. We appreciate everything the town did to help. For our local homeless, we continue to range between five consistent and about nine. So we range between five and nine locals. One female, she's older, she's a senior citizen. We've just gotten her into temporary housing for the next thirty days, but she struggles to find full-time housing. So this update from the rec center next door, this year we provided eighty showers. We have three adults that have actual passes to the rec center that use them. So for a total of about seventeen hundred dollars spent locally next door at the rec center. So the money that you contribute, that the town contributes to this, goes right back through our facilities. So it's great to see. We've had about five hotel accommodations already this, this fall with the cold, cold weather we had the last couple of weeks. That's run about eight hundred dollars. Miscellaneous food cards, we've spent about two thousand dollars this year on city market cards and other different types of food supplements. Miscellaneous supplies, this can be boots, socks, we do a lot of socks. We go through boxes of socks, about thirty-five hundred. So quite a bit with, you know, a lot of times we do get donations, but sometimes the donations we get just aren't good enough to be re-gifted. So we take the money that we're gifted and we buy in bulk on certain shoes, socks, coats, sleeping bags, tents. So that's what we've been doing. I'd like to share with you, I'd like to have a, they are organic lip chaps. So it's getting to be that time of year, but these are the kinds of things that we do help provide our Habitat-challenged, and that's a word that comes from one of our oldest Habitat-challenged persons who lives in senior housing, very happily in Glenwood, Elana McNulty. She's very proud to know that she was one of our first recipients of help and assistance, and she is doing very, very well and appreciates everything we've done. We've also had letters of thanks and gratitude from two gentlemen who because of our services was able to come to the rec center, take a shower every day, and secure a good job. And he was able to secure housing through his job. And so he is a success story as a matter of our help from Carbondale, so. Any questions? That's what we do. We raise the majority of our money in fundraising through Facebook and things like that. We do other kinds of fundraisers, but that's the biggest.
Great, thanks Lynn. And I checked with Lauren and we do have, I believe it's fifteen hundred in the budget this year, and as Lynn described, that's something we've done. It's outside of our community grant process, because I think this group's not set up as a, as a official nonprofit, is that right? So I think it doesn't qualify. But we basically give them fifteen hundred dollars, they buy passes to the showers and rec center with that, and then manage those and distribute them and help deal with any challenges. So it's been a really good partnership.
So that's, we hope to keep those numbers low and we hope to keep them warm this winter. So thanks again, and if anyone has any other questions, please don't hesitate to give me a call.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Thank you. All right, anyone else here from the public who'd like to comment on something not on our agenda tonight?
I want to take this opportunity to talk about the sexual assault that occurred in my neighborhood. So I'm gonna read this so that I don't get too long-winded. From the big public meeting, it was reported that the Carbondale Police told the crowd it has reason to believe the incident was isolated. Officers contacted other police jurisdictions in the Roaring Fork Valley and confirmed a sexual assault of the same nature or by a victim of similar description had not occurred elsewhere. So I wanna say three things about this. First, because I'm a woman. Second, because I live adjacent to the Rio Grande Trail in the vicinity of the assault. And third, because my career was with sexual offenders and victims. The report to the crowd is not reassuring, certainly not to me. Just because there's not been a similar report of an older adult female only tells us that there's no report. We do not know if this is the first time offense. We don't know if the perpetrator is interested in older adult women, or if it was an opportunistic assault and that he would do it to whoever or whatever was available. Every female, regardless of age, in this community is concerned. You all know that. I'm not telling you anything new, but we still have not apprehended this person. Finally, I get texts and alerts of all kinds of safety issues. I found out about this issue several hours after it had occurred, and I called the police to find out whether or not there were any precautions for those of us along the Rio Grande should take, and I got just a generic, "Well, everybody should be taking care of keeping their doors and windows locked", which most of us very often don't even bother doing. So I get Amber Alerts, I get active shooter alerts, I even get alerts about ice and snow mass canyon. I believe that the so, that the neighborhood should have been alerted that there was a rapist in our neighborhood and that the perpetrator had not been apprehended and still had not been apprehended. And so that's what I wanna say. I think there should be a way, when we have such danger in our community, that we are all advised right away that we should take care, and we were not.
Thanks, Nikki.
Hi, Susan Zissler, Carbondale also. A segue here. Talking to one of the commissioners in Newcastle, they use TextMyGov, which is a, a texting program that enables the municipality to contact the entire community with any urgent attention messages. A lost child, lost dog, lost senior, a water main break, a fire. All the different kinds of things that we don't even imagine that can happen, that you would want the community to know about right away and not wait for some public announcement in the newspaper two days later. And they apparently have been using this system, TextMyGov in Newcastle, very successfully with a lot of positive feedback. And I sent that information to a few of you already. And when we brought that up at the meeting, the, one of the biggest issues that people were upset about was it took so long for people to know. And this may be a solution to that. Thank you. Okay, thanks, Sue.
Hi, I'm Bron Kokish. I live on Village Road in Carbondale. And I'm here actually representing Age Friendly Carbondale. Based on a discussion we had at our board meeting this afternoon, we've been monitoring the material the town puts out. And this evening, you're gonna be discussing the budget and Dangerous 133 is right up there, as you said it would be. And I'm here to thank you for that. We're really pleased that the town has, has come through on this, or is coming through on this. And we think that regardless of what's happening in the country, democracy is working quite well in Carbondale. And we intend to see that it keeps working well in Carbondale. And along those lines, we wanna tell you that, you know, you know now more about what expertise we have, what we can pull together. We were very pleased when you turned to us to help kickstart the Downtowner. Hopefully, we did a decent job on that. And please keep us in mind and remember, you know, some of the things we wanna do on 133 are not going to be easy. We're already mystified by CDOT. It seems they don't have an organization chart that we can look at. So we're, we're exploring that and, you know, we're trying to stay on top of this and see what we can do as this moves along to facilitate it and to help the town overcome the obstacles. And again, thank you and please keep us in mind as a resource.
Thanks, Ron. Any other comments from the public? Okay. Might return to our Student of the Month and do one last one of those. And I'll double-check if our, one of their students showed up that I gave you that certificate, but. Hey, so we don't always get these right, but we try to make it better. So our, our last student of the month tonight, I think, is Sofia Moreno. Is Sofia here? Sofia, here's what your teacher said. They said, "She works hard every day in her second language. She takes ownership over her learning. She gives it her best." So you are the Student of the Month. Congratulations. And did Marcus make it? Okay. Anybody else here for Student of the Month that we missed? Okay, all right.
Thank you, Ben.
Okay, next up then is trustee comments. Somebody wanna kick it off? It's been a couple of weeks.
Yeah, what happened?
Yeah, it's hard to, hard to recall everything that happened since last time. Colin, go for it.
So I just wanna congratulate the, the boys soccer team for moving on to the final four, beating Rifle 3-2 over the weekend. So congratulations to them. Unfortunately, the next games are down in Denver, but great achievement and good luck to them. Wanna thank the Soopra Sun for posting or printing the Colorado Gives Day Guide. Colorado Gives Day is December 10th, and it's a way to support all the nonprofits in the region. So if you're interested, check out the website, Soopra Sun, and you can see all the different organizations that have signed up for Colorado Gives Day in our region. Just a housing update. It looks like our legislative effort with a real estate transfer fee has not convinced the governor that he wouldn't veto it, so stay tuned. We'll see where that goes. And Ben and I attended the Subcommittee of RAFDA to talk about first last mile. And we, we stacked the committee by both of us getting on it. So that's gonna be talking about different ways that we might be able to find first last mile going forward. So we'll keep you posted on how that goes, and that's all I have.
Okay, thanks Colin. Ross, want to stay over here?
On the meeting front, I had, I went to the Vrwaapa meeting a couple nights ago. We were planning a watershed summit, I believe that's what it's being called, for this year, sort of getting together various groups with a little bit of an update on the Roaring Fork and, the Roaring Fork Watershed. The can, mussels and other invasive species remain a big concern. There's some, I forgot to bring along the numbers of, in terms of numbers of boats that are caught sort of at, every year at Rudi. I mean, that mitigation is a big part of what we do. I need to make sure that we are funded, or that, that that group is funded in the budget. Lauren, I'll talk to you, make sure that we're, we're there. I wanted to draw attention to Dia de los Muertos, which I think has happened since previous meeting. And again, incredible celebration. A lot of work goes into celebrations. And so just wanted to acknowledge Carbondale Arts and all the folks, volunteers and employees who are working there. And Apaco, obviously, with incredible dancers and our, our musicians from the Roaring Fork Youth Orchestra who also were there. But again, just a great, great opportunity to, to celebrate this town, do something a little bit different, embrace some of the bigger portions of our culture here. And I just think it's an amazing event and I can't wait to kind of see it grow sort of as it has, which just is like, no one's trying to do too much, it's like a little bit bigger every year. And I think good decisions have been made. I felt that this year it actually kind of came together a little bit better than it had in years past. It was also reasonably not frigid, which always helps. I, I want to acknowledge Nikki's comment. I know that actually probably more than a quorum of the trustees here were at the public meeting at the RVR Barn regarding this horrific crime. And I want tragic events like this to be opportunities, not to micromanage in advance of or after the fact, but to learn. And I, and I wanna make sure that we learn. In this case, my understanding is that we, and I hesitate to say this because I, I kind of saw it happening and I didn't wanna micromanage. But we did not, as much as we talk about wanting people to sign up for our, for our newsletter and town announcements, that meeting itself was only announced via Facebook and to, to the public. We, I believe we, as trustees, got something earlier in the day. However, I, I think we need to really look at how this works, to what extent there might be alert options. And if I'm saying something wrong, please let me know. But, but I believe that, that, that the meeting itself didn't go out over our, our town notifications. After the fact, a public, almost along with it was a public message, but I believe that happened like around six or seven. I could be, if I'm wrong, please let me know. In any case, I think we need to tighten up how, how that, how that works. I know there was discussions of best practices in terms of alerts and sexual assaults in particular. And I learned a lot about that, I feel, I feel like, but I think that also leads to more questions, especially in a, in a compound crime like this, where it was apparently breaking and entering as well. So I'd like us to maybe put that on as a topic of conversation and maybe at a work session going forward. But I want to acknowledge that there is trauma out there among the pub, among the public as well. And hopefully, we can, we can make sure that we reach people maybe a little bit sooner in those cases. I meant to end with Dia de los Muertos, because that was much more fun. But anyway, onward and thank you.
Next, Chris, any comments tonight?
I share those concerns. I was not at that meeting because I was also double-scheduled with our big third draft Carbondale Mobility Access Plan meeting as well, which was at the exact same time, which was a little frustrating. But that was a, that was a well-attended meeting as well, actually, which was good to see some folks from, well, a good number of folks from the Bike Ped Commission, as well as age-friendly and other interested parties. So they have a third draft, which is out, and I, I think, I don't know if it's been sent out round to the trustees, but I think it's worth looking at that draft. At this point, I think it's been baked enough that I think it's worth us looking at, maybe. I think they're gonna present it in this January or February. So there's plenty of time, and I think there's gonna be another Bike Ped meeting next month. Will probably involve more, you know, digesting of it or, or further, further refinement. There's definitely still some sense that it doesn't, there's something, you know, I don't know. Some of the Bike Ped members feel that there's like something missing there, that's sort of unifying or something. So we're trying to tease out what that is or how to get them to feel like it's, that it is good. But I, I'm, they're not quite, they're not feeling it exactly. So, but I do feel like it was an improvement and there are a lot of things that did get better. So I think it can still. It may take a little bit of work more on our side, maybe to massage some of the project lists or something at the end of the day. I don't know. So yeah, that's, that's going on. I have personal news. I have taken a part-time job at KDNK for, I'm taking over for Ally, basically doing three days a week of membership coordination and event stuff. So that's why I have not filled out the, the giving thing.
The community grants.
The community grants thing. So I don't, yeah, and I, so I don't, I think I should probably recuse myself, but that's up to you guys. Yeah, Colorado Gifts Day, December 10th. Everybody, please pay attention to that. And there's so many, so many nonprofits in that newspaper worth looking at and thinking about giving to. And yeah, just Dia de los Muertos was, was awesome and does just get a little bit better every year. And I just, I really personally appreciate the ofrenda and the opportunity to, to think about all the people that passed this last year and, and respect and honor them. And it's such a beautiful way to do it. So yeah, it's super big thanks to everyone involved in that.
All right, thanks, Chris. Christina?
Just thanks. Congratulations again to all the Student of the Month. It's great to see all the youth getting all the recognition of Student of the Month. And thank you for the public comments. And I do like the idea and the information about the text alerts. I think that's, you know, I'm sure we could get more information about the town doing text alerts and what it involves. I would like to hear more about that. I think that is, you know, what I'm hearing in the community that people would like. And also, I'm gonna be, I'm on the Tourism Council and they were talking about budget and we're finalizing that for twenty-five and the same with the chamber. I'll be Jess's alternate on it this week for the Garfield Clean Energy Meeting. And I met with Morgan, so she filled me in on, on some information. So excited to be the alternative for that this Friday and get some information out. And then I'll also be going to the chamber meeting as well. And then I just wanted to ask if on the November newsletter, I really like, and I know it's probably in other information, but I've been looking at the Carbondale link, the Carbondale Pool link and how it's like updated, and I think it's just really cool. But I didn't see it on the November newsletter, so if we could just include that link on there, I think that's just another way to put it out, and especially over the winter, because I know people walk by there and kind of like look how it's going. But I think that link is really cool to look at, too. But I think that link is really cool to look at, too. But that's all I have.
Great, thanks Christina. Jess, any comments?
No, I don't have anything tonight. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. I don't think I really have anything to add, just support everything that everybody said and wanted to mention that we do have a, Lauren and I were kind of fleshing out the next couple of months' work sessions, topics today, based on these things that have come up at meetings and that we identified at our retreat back in August. And we've penciled in a police work session for January, so that'd be on January 21st. So I just added kind of the notification guidelines, protocols to that. So I think we can really dive into that. It sounds like a long time from now, it'll be here before we know it with the holidays and all that. And we also have a general kind of water, water rights, water conservation overview scheduled for that month. If any board members have any particular things you'd like us to dive into and address, either talking about our police department or talking about water, whether that's towns' water rights or Colorado water law or whatever, please let me know what those are.
What meeting is that?
That's January. So January twenty, January twenty first, yeah. So we have time, but as Lauren and I were looking at it, it wasn't really clear like exactly what our goals are with the police work session and exactly what our goals are with the water topic. So we have some time, we can come back and talk about it in person. You can shoot me an email, you know, whatever works. But I'd just love some input on those because I don't have a really clear outcome for either of those right now. And then the Mobility Access Plan that Chris mentioned is on our calendar for the last meeting in January. So that's January 28th. And you know, that plan has grown a lot, like it's taken about twice as long and cost almost twice as much as we had originally planned. And I think it's time to get it to us and let us grapple with it. So we're going to ask that the Bike Ped Trail Commission gets it to us by then, whatever point it's at for them. Because then this happens with plans sometimes. This kind of happened with the comprehensive plan update. It sort of stays with the commission who's so deep into it that it's not quite what they want it to be. And at some point, they gotta let it go and they gotta, they gotta let it get to us. And then we can make some final updates and then we can adopt it. And then it's a living document and we can continue to iterate on that and improve upon it over time. So just so that's really clear, we're not budgeting more money for the consultant to keep working in 2025. Like that project is nearing its end. And I think it's going to go before lots of other boards and commissions in the next month or two. It's going to go before E-Board, Parks and Rec, and who am I, P&amp;Z? So we're going to have input from four different commissions on that, as well as about a two-year process and a lot of public input. So I think we'll have a pretty dang good plan that I'm sure won't be perfect, but I think it'll be pretty dang good. So I look forward to seeing that on January 21st and no later. Okay, that's all I had. Any other comments before we move on with our agenda?
So what day was that police one?
Police is the 21st.
Oh, so that'll be water slash police?
Yep.
Great.
Okay. Attorney's comments. Susan, anything tonight? All right, well, thanks for being here. Managers update. Lauren?
I don't have very much, but I have something sort of special and bittersweet. I want to introduce everybody to our incoming town clerk. Patrick Tebow started last week while I was gone. And he's very enthusiastic. He comes to us from the clerk's office in Broomfield. So he does have some pretty good clerk chops going already. And there's going to be a nice overlap with Jessica, since she'll be here for several more weeks. So welcome, Patrick.
Great, thanks.
Do you have anything that you want to say? Here.
Just really quick. I'm excited to be here, excited to work with everybody. And most importantly, I'm excited to meet and interact with the town of Carbondale. So thank you all again.
Great, thanks, Patrick. Thanks for joining us. We're excited to have you. We're sorry to see Jessica go, but I'm glad that you two have a lot of overlap. We don't always get that luxury to really do some onboarding. I walked by the office today and the door was shut and Patrick was in the driver's seat and Jessica was sitting across the desk, giving him pointers on how to do all that.
Were my feet up? Were my feet up?
Anything else, Lauren? Okay. All right, then, we are moving into action items. First item is one that we've been waiting about two years for, and I'm really excited to finally do, which is our Latino Advisory Board appointment. So if you're here to be appointed to the Latino Advisory Board, please join us at the table here. You can all sit together. And we'd just love to celebrate the fact that we're finally kicking this off. And maybe hear a little bit about, from each of you, just what you're interested in, what brought you to the Latino Advisory Board.
Please comment.
Please introduce.
As explanation, we were supposed to have an interpreter here tonight.
Okay.
And I have no idea where that individual is.
Okay.
But Anna will help where she can.
Okay.
Normally, we would have an interpreter here.
So I'll start by just saying that our Latino Advisory Board, its purpose is to elevate the voice of our Latino community, which we know is a diverse community and doesn't speak with one voice, but has issues that might be different from other parts of the community. And with language barriers and other things, there might be barriers sometimes to active participation. So our goal is to remove those barriers and be able to have better two-way communication with our Latino community. So we hope that you'll bring things to us that maybe we're not thinking of. And also that we can bring things to you and get your feedback on. So with that, I'd love it if you could each just take a moment to introduce yourself into the microphone and just tell us a little bit about why you stepped up to serve in this role. And we're very happy to have you here.
Hi, my name is Viviana. I'm a resident of Carbondale since 1999. And I'm just interested to help get those barriers across for our Latino and Anglo community.
Great, thank you, Viviana. Spanish or English, Anna, whatever you prefer. Anna always makes me speak Spanish whenever I go to Fat Belly and order something. She does a good job. But I know she can do both.
Mi nombre es Anna Tapia. Yo soy una residente de aquí de el pueblo de Carbondale.
And I'm a resident of the town of Carbondale.
Tengo varios años trabajando para diferentes organizaciones sin fines de lucro.
I have been working for several organizations, nonprofits, and other companies.
Y también Fat Belly. A mí me gustaría ser parte de aquí para lo que estaba diciendo, a remover esas barreras. Ser un puente entre ambas comunidades. Y creo que nada más son dos comunidades es inmensas, ¿verdad? Pero ser como un poquito portavoz de equipo allá de acá.
Just be that bridge between the both communities and for all the communities as well.
Pues aquí está.
Okay. Gracias, Anna.
Hola, mi nombre es Maribel.
Hi, my name is Maribel.
Yo tengo veinte años viviendo aquí en Carbondale.
And I have been living here in Carbondale for 20 years.
Y me gustaría estar más involucrada.
And I would like to be more involved.
Y también me gustaría ayudar en lo que pueda.
Help in whichever way I can.
So ser parte de la voz de la comunidad.
And be part of the voice of the community.
Thank you, Maribel. Maybe we can move the mic around so people can hear.
Hi, my name is Maria Judith Álvarez. And I don't live here in Carbondale, but I worked here for probably eight years ago. So I'm very happy to be part of this junta asesora.
Yeah, Latino Advisory Board.
He estado en otra junta asesora de la comunidad latina del condado de Garfio.
I have also been part of another advisory board with Garfield County.
Y creo que esta es una muy buena oportunidad de poder
This is a great opportunity to be able to
traer esa experiencia.
Experience.
Y pues ser la voz de la comunidad.
Be the voice of the community, yeah.
Solo estoy contenta de estar aquí.
I'm very happy to be part of this.
To be here.
Okay, thank you all so much and thank you, Anna. And thank you, Christina, for your leadership and restarting this. And thank you, Lauren, for kind of maintaining this. This is, we passed a resolution, really, I think it's about two years ago now, to form this board. And we tried multiple times to get people to sign up and we just kept failing. And it took this kind of outreach and this kind of team. So thank you for putting that together. Any questions or comments before we entertain a motion to appoint all the applicants? There's five applicants to this board and get it started. Go ahead, Christina.
Gracias por venir. Thank you for coming. Estoy muy feliz. I'm very happy que están aquí. Tengo preguntas para ustedes. I have questions. Es fácil, está bien. Nomás quiero saber qué es el más favorito cosa in Carbondale para ustedes. What's your favorite thing in Carbondale for you guys?
La gente es hermoso. Te sientes bienvenido.
They're very welcoming.
Nunca he sentido ningún rechazo.
A rejection.
Y mucho apoyo.
And a lot of support.
Thank you. Pues yo tengo muchas cosas favoritas aquí.
I have a lot of favorite things here.
No sé por cuál empezar, pero sí.
I don't know where to start, but.
Estoy de acuerdo que es una comunidad muy calidad. Y se siente uno bien. Es independientemente de involucrarme con la comunidad latina en el restaurando donde estoy trabajando, es no es el cien por ciento de las diferentes comunidades que no hablan español, pero la mayoría de las personas son muy, muy amigables. Entonces es como que ese es algo muy importante para que la gente pueda ser como abierta, pueda expresar.
She's just saying that being in the restaurant industry, she sees a lot of the community. And a lot of the community is amicable. And so she likes that part of the community.
Sí.
Yeah, yeah, it's a difference community. It's not exactly the Anglo or Latinos. It's, oh my God, this isn't the word. But it's it's common that people come here, welcome and nice and friendly and open the mind. So it's very important, especially when the people move to here. Because I don't know, who is my neighbor, who's my coworker or something. So I think the open mind is a great point. Thank you. Sorry, my Spanish is short.
A mí me gusta mucho que es un pueblo pequeño.
I like that it's a small town.
Me gustó que mis hijas, cosa favorita fue que mis hijas estuvieron en un lugar muy seguro.
And I really like that my girls, my daughters, grew up in a very secure, safe town.
Y me gusta que hay, como dijo, hay muchas
And that there's a lot of support.
Y también me gusta mucho que la gente es muy calidad muy.
And how everyone is very welcoming and you don't feel rejected.
Well, what I love about Carbondale is the community, the diversity between everybody and how you can walk into town and everybody will say hi to you. And of course, we can't forget all our local businesses. I love like the restaurants, Pipino's, all-time favorite.
Okay, thank you. Good question, Christina. Any other questions or comments before we entertain a motion? I think we're all just very happy and very appreciative that you're giving your time for this. All right, so with that, I would entertain a motion to appoint the five applicants to the Latino Advisory Board.
I'll move to, do I have specific language I need to say?
No, I think that's fine.
Also moved.
Okay. That'll work.
One second.
All right, motion by Chris, second by Ross. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you all. We look forward to working with you.
That's what I hear.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Little Blue Preschool Expansion Public Improvements Extension. Jared?
So this kind of arose in discussions with the Little Blue team. They expressed some concerns about meeting the public improvements deadline that was outlined in their DIA from their initial approval, which is including your staff report and are requesting a one-year extension. Staff supports the request. I think it's completely reasonable. And so I think we're really just here to formalize that with the First Amendment to the Development Improvement Agreement. And Little Blue is here to answer any questions that you guys might have.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Anything the applicant would like to share before we discuss and vote on that? Any additional information?
We're appreciative of you all considering it. As a USDA loan is definitely taking a bit more time than we had anticipated and trying to be fiscally responsible and do all the right things as we move forward in expanding to better serve the community. So.
Yeah, I think I'll just kind of echo that with every intention of completing this project, given our weightless status, given the need, all that sort of thing. This is kind of top priority for us right now. And we've been sadly kind of sitting in limbo on this USDA process. So we're kind of moving in other directions to move that along a little faster, kind of personally fundraising and that sort of thing to make this happen. So, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see, is this a, I don't think it's a public hearing, so. Yeah, just a public improvements extension. So with that, we can entertain
I'll make a motion.
Questions, okay?
Approve the First Amendment to the Development Improvement Agreement for the Little Blue Pre-House Expansion Project.
Okay, motion by Colin, second by Chris. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, I like this. We're ahead of time. Next item is the Community Housing Inclusionary Requirements. This is a Code Text Amendment public hearing for ordinance numbers 10, series of 2024. Maybe Jared, you can just refresh our memory on how we got here and exactly where we are in the process now with this with this hearing tonight. And then we'll ask questions and open it up to the public.
Yeah, certainly. So I saved you kind of all the background information at this packet. But it's been kind of an extensive year-plus process working with the Plan Zoning Commission, the public and you guys to recommend updates to the Community Housing Inclusionary Requirements, portion of the UDC. So ordinance 10 captures all the changes that were discussed at the last meeting. It does include the increase to the rental-only projects for those four-unit developments, which was one of the big discussion points at the last meeting. And so I believe this kind of captured all of those directives that we received from the trustees. One thing that we noticed when we were drafting the ordinance is that, and also when we were working on the building regulation updates, is that the building code also included nearly identical language in there related to community housing inclusion requirements. It seemed like at the time, maybe the community housing requirements were in the building code. And then with the adoption of the UDC, we codified them there, but we never kind of cleaned up the other two. So we're taking this opportunity to clean up the building regulations so that our community housing inclusion requirements are in one location and don't contradict one another. So that's really the one change. And that's just kind of in one of those first whereas statements. Or excuse me, in Or excuse me, in condition number two of the ordinance. Other than that, I really am here to answer any questions you guys might have. It is a notice public hearing or continued public hearings, but I believe you guys did close the public comment portion of the meeting at your last, of the hearing at your last meeting. I'll get the words together.
Okay, so that's a little confusing. I'm not clear if I need to open it as a public hearing or not, then.
I think if people want to speak, I would encourage you to entertain.
Okay, so we can. I want to make sure we can, because I'm open for sure. And just for anybody who's listening, the highlight here is that we're moving from 20% of all units for larger developments for 10 or more up to 25% of all the units will have to be deed restricted affordable housing. And then it's a sort of a sliding scale for smaller projects so that it doesn't have the disproportionate impact on something from a smaller developer who might not be able to provide as much subsidy. And then I think a really important one that I think the board did a great job sort of catching was with the rental units, starting that at a lower number, I think it's at four rentals or more now, and having the fourth one be a lower income level than was previously in there. So I think before it was 130% or something like that, now it's going to be 80% of area median income. So we're noticing that apartments and rentals are doing a good job providing housing at market rates for higher income people, but not a very good job providing below-market rates for lower-income people, and so we'll hopefully see more of that. So that's, that's the gist. Questions from the board for staff before we briefly open a public hearing and then move on with it?
So, so at that meeting, and I'm generally pretty happy with what we got here, I think it's a big improvement. At that meeting though, I, I did suggest that, that I'd be open to and wanted, proposed a motion to allow, to move some things to 30%. And I don't have the, the numbers in front of me at the moment. And, and it sort of was like record scratch, even though I feel like I had some support within the board for that. It was sort of a record scratch and then a concern that we would have to kind of go back to, to renotice the meeting because of that number. And I'm just curious, just, just, I feel like we kind of moved on real quick. And so I'm just a little bit curious about to what extent anything is malleable within the context of a meeting versus it having to basically be set in stone in the original public notice. And I feel like maybe what I was proposing wasn't necessarily that out of line and could reasonably be assumed to have been something that could be discussed in a meeting as, as advertised.
So I'll try to answer your question, and I'll give you a lawyer answer. It really depends on what you want to change and what was noticed for the public portion of the meeting. I think, I recall when that came up at the meeting that we were discussing and I think the issue was the Planning and Zoning Commission didn't have an opportunity to really consider or have their own process on that specific request. I think you said 30%. So, in my opinion, my recommendation would be that that would need to go through the typical process where you would start back at planning and zoning and notice those meetings. And then when it gets to the Board of Trustees level, have public notice on that specific request. Because, just to further explain, I think it's substantively different than what was proposed. And so the concern is making sure that people have an opportunity to be heard.
Fair enough. Yeah, and I wasn't necessarily, I just, just wanted to do some clarification, so, all good.
But it would depend, I think, on the circumstance and what the discussion is.
So maybe more so best practices than legally binding perhaps, or not.
Can you say that again?
Well, I would say more so best, best practices than, than anything else in that case.
Well, I, I guess maybe a little bit more than best practices. I think, you know, we're thinking about due process and fundamental fairness to some of these things. I think we really want to make sure the public has an opportunity to know what you're going to be discussing and voting on, and the opportunity to be heard, just in case there's a challenge to it. You know, we want to have a real clear record that this was noticed properly.
The notice was not, this is, the notice was this is exactly what we're voting on, this 25%, where the notice was the discussion of inclusionary zoning requirements.
Boy, I would have to.
That's where I guess would.
The notice was generic inclusionary housing requirements. I think where we felt it was material was, you know, any quote-unquote "large" project significantly increasing their housing mitigation requirements, because I believe the discussion was 30% AMI and 30% RO, which is a pretty significant number of units above and beyond. And we felt that would just be best to give the Plan Zoning Commission an opportunity to weigh in on that as well as the public greater opportunity to comment.
Cool. Thank you. Thanks for the explanation.
Thanks Ross. Any other questions for staff before we open it up? Okay, we'll open a public hearing on this if anybody has comments on our Inclusionary Housing Requirements Updates. Ordinance Number 10, now's your chance to approach the podium. Don't see anybody in the room, anybody online, raise your Zoom hand if you'd like to speak on this. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And any further discussion or a motion?
Just a discussion item. Ross, I think part of the issue too is also P&amp;Z feeling uncomfortable that they didn't have the information to really assess what it would be like to go to 30. I think we have an opportunity though. We've been talking about doing some housing assessment work related to real estate transfer fee. And the, the House Bill 174 requires local governments to do housing needs assessments by the end of 2026. So I think we can revisit that question and have some actual information about what we're discussing moving forward.
Sounds good.
Colin?
I'd move to approve Ordinance Number 10, Series of 2024. If nobody else has any thing to say.
Second.
Okay, motion by Chris, second by Colin, any discussion about the motion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously.
Thanks Jared.
Thank you guys.
Alright, thanks everybody. Let's move forward. Yeah, thanks Jared for shepherding that along. I know that that was a long process. And it's a good reminder Colin of what you said, and it reminded me that we had kind of decided to do the, the fast track without doing the deep dive. And we felt like this was about as far as we could go along that path. And then if we want to go deeper, it'll take more work. So that's good, good questions of Ross and good clarification Colin.
This is more of a process question for planning. So we were somewhat specific, but it took P&amp;Z like five public meetings to get through it. And then we have to make a decision. I'm just wondering, or can we tweak that system so we're, it's very clear what we're asking them, but we give them a timeframe? So we can, and that's also your time, so that we can get it back to us, so we can move forward on it. Just, just a thought as we move, as we think about, because this isn't going to be the only code amendment we make going forward. There's going to be others. And how do we, how do we value people's time, get public input, but don't have it take just a really long time to get to a final decision?
Certainly, I think, you know, helping set those expectations kind of at the outset of what you guys are looking for, if it's really kind of a deep dive or if it's something a bit more directed and targeted, I think would be helpful. And then I think we can do a better job as staff, kind of checking in with you guys on some of these longer processes when it's been a few meetings, letting you know where we're at and then, you know, getting feedback if we need to. Or, you know, more directive to the, the Plan Zoning Commission or the boards and commissions about how we can move it forward.
We can remember that ourselves, and then if you can remind us, what are you looking for? That'd be great, thank you.
And along those lines, we have our semi-annual update with P&amp;Z next week at our work sessions. So I think if there's anything that we're thinking about sending their way, that'd be a good time to, to start thinking that through. I'm not sure where we are with like ADUs, I think that was another one on our horizon. But I think if we're going to send that their way, we need to be pretty clear, like, we're looking for these kinds of things. And then bring it back to us. Okay, thanks Jared. Okay. Who's walking down the hall? Eric, okay. Yeah, next item on the agenda is the Chacos Park Final Draft Schematic Design Master Plan. Give Eric a moment to get here. Is there, just while we have a quick moment, is there anything anybody would like to make sure we do talk about with P&amp;Z next? Top of mind, and again, if, if not now, you can, you know, over the next week, if you email me those, we'll kind of form a little bit of a list of talk.
Well, we've brought up the whole notion of parking requirements, so I'd love to get your thoughts on that. We can, I can be more specific. I'm also really interested in, so we require traffic studies, but not bike ped studies. It'd be really interesting to know what's the best practice related to that. And we talked related to the new restaurant on 133, transportation fees. And it'd be great to really fully understand our fee structure. That might not, that might be more of a staffing issue, but I'll think of a few more. But I, I get the feeling that we're making decisions on certain things and each time we do it, we notice something in our code that's not, not that great. And I'm trying to remember what those are, so I'll.
Well, one of them was that maximum setback and minimum setback are exactly 10 feet in that zone along Highway 133. So there was not an inch of wiggle room, which doesn't really make sense.
I mean, the, the UDC does a fairly decent job at getting us projects that we like, but by the time they get to us, because they have already met all the guidelines, we can't really change them. And if we want to, we have to go upstream and make sure that we're asking them the right question.
I would probably add to that, a.
Is your thing on?
A rendering, oh, it is on actually. Just, just some, some notifications that any renderings taken at like 30 feet also are shown at, at eye level. I know it's, it's a bit of a pet peeve, but it also really makes a difference. And oftentimes that difference is whether or not your view of sopors is blocked and that's a big deal in this town. Okay.
As, as you think of other things, shoot them away and we'll, we'll add it. It'll be an informal conversation, but I'll make sure that Jared has what he needs to, to get that together. I expect they'll come in with some ideas, we'll come in with some ideas, we might not get to them all. But we're meeting twice a year, so it won't take as long to, it'll seem like those come along pretty quick. Okay, Eric, now we're ready for you. The final draft, it says, of the schematic design of the Chacos Park Master Plan.
This is the final.
Ben, on this one, we're not, we're not doing a motion or anything, it's just final.
I mean, I would ask Eric that, actually, I would think we'd want to move to approve at the end so that they can move forward with this. That's a good question Christina, it doesn't specify it and it doesn't call out a recommended motion. But I think it's good for the record that either we approve it or we don't.
This would be our final kind of presentation of the schematic master plan. So unless there's any, you know, changes that need to happen, you know, from the trustees' perspective, then it would need to come back in front of you. But, but right, yeah, right now, as far as the schematic design, this, this, we'd like to get it approved tonight so we can move on to construction documents and design documents, so.
Okay. Nick, are you going to dazzle us here?
I hope so.
Yeah?
I hope so.
Good, see you up there now.
Thanks for the time tonight. And first, and also importantly, thank you for the opportunity to be part of this project. Over the course of 13 months, 14 months now, we've had the opportunity to dig deep and get a cross-section of how this community sees Chacos Park and sees how it relates to not just a day-to-day use, but events. And it was very exciting to see that, you know, those early takes of, this is our heart, is the heartbeat, you know, this is our, kind of our outdoor space, it really came full circle in everything we, we saw and did. So it was awesome to be part of that.
Yeah, you're just reminding me that I think when you first put the phone booth out there and did the big public input, that was the light-up Carbondale, so that was last December, right? I remember hanging out with you at that, that's, that's amazing that it's been a whole year.
Yeah, and I mean, and that was, we were kind of already underway at that point too, so it was like, it was, it's been a very thorough process. I always seem to get this one wrong, so pardon me, I'm sharing the entire thing. The question is, will this all slides? Yes, alright.
Yeah, it's a big file.
I did reduce it to try to, it, it was a bit of a heavy file. Need to reduce it. A lot of folks had hands in this. First and foremost, we did a steering committee that was awesome. They volunteered their time, they showed up, they weighed in. I know Sue is here, so grateful for her support of this project and all kinds of great input. Parks and Rec Commission also was very helpful, always willing to weigh in, give us the good critiques and the bad. We appreciated the honesty. I say we, Yancy is racing back from a trustee meeting in Basalt right now. So hopefully he's driving safely and will also arrive here to talk a few things through. And then thank you to all of you who also gave us some great feedback. And we tried to weave that in to this, to this final plan. The goal has not changed. The goal was, is, has maintained the same. And as far as project vision, there's a lot of words there.
I don't know if we're seeing what you're seeing.
You know, I thought I had it. I don't know why.
Is it your screen being shared or is it?
Yeah, my screen sharing is being paused. I mean, Ross, it likes your Mac, right?
I think so.
I don't know why, it's, it's not a fan of mine. I'm going to stop and start up again. There we go. A lot of words for that project vision, but I want to summarize it by saying, the vision for Chacos Park, as we've realized, is to be Carbondale's Swiss Army Knife for its community. The do-it-all tool that in, from day-to-day, small events or just daily wanderings and meetups to those, you know, headline events, the light-up Carbondale, that Chacos can do all of that, support all of that, while at the same point being something that this community looks to as being a reflection of who they are and how they like to function, being outside, being comfortable. Project priorities really, they really haven't changed. They've been refined over the course of this, but it's that multifunctional and innovative design approach, really maximizing that central space to make sure that everything from an ice rink to a concert to informal gathering can happen there. Increasing the park comfort, shade, seating, tables, the basics. Meaningful connections with Fourth Street and, and the plaza across the way. A welcoming space for not just residents, but visitors and families. Those, you know, so requested green improvements. Looking at how we can bring greenery and beautification into downtown, into the core. That, you know, building on that character that we talked about and the social physical heart of Carbondale. Updating park infrastructure accessibility and then last but not least honoring that Chacos legacy and really being something that they're excited, or their boys are excited at this point to put their names on and see their parents. Here we can see kind of the, a general timeline or quick timeline. Just kind of want to go to those, the, kind of that, that last thing when we got to meet last in August. The shade structure, we, we now acknowledge a central portion of that that will be 12 months of rain, sleet, snowproof. And sun. So, and then it was actually a really great, you know, we went back and looked at it and it was like, you know, it was a really cool way to look at it because we'll have that central portion and then there will be kind of a periphery that, that almost not be too artsy, but it dissolves into space, not quite as heavy, not quite as costly on like a pragmatic level. That passeo or that connection along the east side, we reduced it to six feet. Kind of a, that nice minimum width, but we left that area for event and loading at 10 feet for that, that distance. So vehicle, so trucks can back in there, their crews can get in and out nice and easily for support of the ice rink or other events. And then we also increased bicycle parking, especially in the areas that, that you all kind of asked for, being up at that, more of that front main street location, which is there along. location, which is there along El Dorado on the northeast corner to the tune of about the, that can handle another dozen bicycles over there. Here is an illustration looking kind of an oblique, aerial oblique, if you will, looking from the top of Dinkle down into the park. You'll see El Dorado there in the background on the left. The alley is behind. Here, what, you know, this was kind of just looking at a, an enhanced typical day, if you will. Carbondale is booming these days. We have a jazz band. He's just hanging out. But really looking at the outdoor spaces, really seeing how paving patterns, how the platform, how shade is able to kind of come together in a unified way, how the park is buffered and framed around the periphery, but it's not enclosed in, in a way that is, that says no, it still feels welcoming. There's, there, we still want to kind of show that, kind of the, the entry, the access points to it. It shows how that, that water play feature really fits in in a way where you could imagine it not being a water feature and in being used for other things. And in the worst case of, of a funding thing, that could go away and that becomes lawn as well. So, so we see that. We see along the front edge of Main Street how the, you know, how we look at kind of low water drought tolerant plantings can come in and provide seasonal color. And then how that kind of moves into Fourth Street in a way that really speaks to the pedestrian, that really speaks to that idea of how pedestrians come first in that, in that plan. There are no curbs. Everything is, is, is flat and smooth. We are currently showing bollards in this situation. Working on another project now, where actually bollards may be able to be replaced with detectable warning zones. So if, if we wanted to remove that that's something that would be kind of reviewed in that CD process and, and as far as town standards to see what was, you know, most, that was most comfortable moving forward with.
Replacing them with what?
Sorry?
Replacing them with what?
Detectable warnings. They're those kind of the truncated domes that you see at, at intersections where if you were visually impaired, you would feel that texture.
On the platform at the park and ride.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So the, so that, that can, was, is actually used in these vuner or curbless situations to delineate for both cars and visually impaired users. Any questions at this stage? While we're kind of, we're looking at this kind of, this picture?
I mean, just while you're on kind of the bollard topic, do we have a thought about making it easier to close off Fourth Street in conjunction with this, or would it still be dragging out the big?
No, no. So yeah, great question. Thanks, Ben. So we're not showing them in, in this illustrative kind of mode, but really these bollards here, these four bollards and the four bollards on the other side, they are removable. And so with a simple key, they quarter twist, pull out, and then those would be relocated on the front. You're seeing this, this is the actual crosswalk right here. They would be relocated to the front side of that crosswalk. There would be receiving sleeves.
Great.
So what would take a lot of men and a lot more time would now be a, a few minutes each, quick turn, pull them, move them over. So there's no need for storage. They just go from one place to the other.
That's great. Very creative.
That's, yeah, that's super great. Kind of a transfer. If you're into 80s stuff, it's really transformer-like. The site plan, kind of like what we're just talking about here, now like to bring kind of our attention over to the Fourth Street Plaza now. Tried to keep it kind of gentle, not over-design it, but keep, keep a light hand, but still, I, you know, I, the words I would use are, you know, bookend and extension of what's happening over on the Chaco side of Fourth Street. So extending that character in materials, you know, really looking at these kind of these informal blocks, stone blocks for seating that can be used in, in various ways. And then a small nod to planting. That was a special request of the steering committee. They really appreciated how we were greening it up and they wanted to bring something over there. And I think it was a really nice request to kind of keep things consistent across the way. You can also see here how we're showing that, kind of that solid area of the shade structure, you know, right over the core portion of the platform. And then that periphery will follow out. So that's kind of covering, providing a limited, limited amount of coverage over ADA access ramps and the kind of that informal step seating approach. As a reminder, that's such a lawn that, that does fit the, the ice rink as well. Any questions at the site plan stage?
Yeah, Ross. Looks great. I really like it. I'm, I question whether, like, it seems like if you look at this on, on this level, it's basically a really cool design with two parking spots right in the middle. And, and what could we gain without, if, if we, how, how fundamental are those two parking spots to, to our needs? And what could we gain if we didn't have to deal with cars there? I mean, I, I love, I love that, that your renderings are, you have a couple eye level renderings. And in all of those, you know, we have flattened the, we got flat Stanley cars. And so as soon as you put a Lincoln Navigator and, or in there, you know, it changes the, it changes the feeling for sure. And I think we lose a little bit of that connection. I'm just curious how important those spots are, if we can find another spot somewhere else to switch. I don't know. It seems like a lot of, a lot of effort to keep those two and a lot of maybe some missed opportunities to, to really connect.
Uh, you know, commenting on the necessity of those parking spaces in Dunhund Carbondale is above my pay grade. Fair enough. I'm gonna let you all decide that one. The request we received in the very beginning of this project was to, to maintain some parking there.
Yeah.
And I think what we've discussed before is this could be perceived or conceived of as a pilot project for a more serious closing of this section of Fourth Street or, you know, in, in, in various ways. So I would, I guess the best response would be those four parking spaces, two on each side.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there, there's two underneath those kind of ornamental trees on the, on the west side as well. Those could similarly be pilot projects that could, you know, I, you know, one, one, I, I think really appropriate consideration would be maybe those become bicycle parking. If, if, if the parking spaces weren't needed, or maybe they are accessible only parking spaces. Those are some comments that we received or suggestions. So I think there is a, a variable, variable amount of options to, to use those, but we just wanted to respond to the request to keep some parking. I, I think it's kind of cool that with all of this, we went on a road diet, removed curbs, you know, very progressive kind of approach to festival street design. A lot of ideas were brought in and we only lost three parking spaces throughout that process. So I think that was kind of how we saw it. Any other questions at site plan level?
I also think this is great, but my only question is, did you have a lot of discussion about that sort of north side of the lawn? You have kind of, I sort of like the way you have it, it's sort of breaking down and, and following the edge of your, of your stage on the south side, but then it's sort of a real big patio kind of thing on the north side. And I was curious if you'd thought about sort of, you know, breaking that down a little bit too, because it does, does feel like kind of a lot of paving over there. I, I did see tables, which you want to try to accommodate and then room around them. So I'm sort of fine if you want to just leave it that way, but you know, I do like having as much grass as we can maintain and
I totally.
Want that to feel like it's, yeah, significant enough piece of grass. It's not like totally hand in, in concrete, you know. Sorry. And I just thought the other side where you sort of feathered it or whatever was pretty, I've liked that sort of feeling a little bit more than just the straight, you know, super straight line.
Yeah, I, I couldn't agree more with you, Chris. I mean, we, we brought it over to the west side with the paving, you know, it was like this, this deconstructed, this feathering of the, the, the ground plane, I think was really fun to play with and to, to imagine in real time, especially with those irregular planter bed forms. So thank, thank you for the compliment. As far as, you're right, it is kind of a courtyard on that end. There is opportunity when those, when those trees do come in and, and you can imagine in high sun, in, in summer solstice, then there really will be some nice shade there and some kind of like, I, I think more cafe style seating available. So there was a combination of that, along with this accessible route, you know, which, which we're going to talk about like here. So there was something about like this, the cleanliness design at that point. If you remember, the reason that we, we kind of broke down that south side was to get that, the platform to have this almost this, this nod to the intersection.
Just to give it a little bit more of a, yeah.
Yeah, kind of like canting it just to the northwest a little bit. So there was a, a basis for that form decision there, where on the north side, that's really kind of the, the east-west artery within the site, you know, not including the crosswalk. We, we could look at that for sure in, in DD CD. That, that makes a lot of sense.
I just keep it in mind. I don't think it's, I mean, we're early enough in the process. It's a matter of like two buckets of concrete or something, so. And there is a sidewalk north of there that I feel like is going to continue being an east-west thing. So I just, just put that in the back here.
Yeah, we're done. Yeah, thanks for the input on that.
And I don't think it's the end of the world at all. If it's just like that, it's fine.
Cool. You know, Parks Commission did have some folks on there who, who do comment on, they wondered about the, the deconstruction or, you know, the, where the, the turf and the, these two-by-two squares come together. They were wondering if that was going to be a maintenance concern for Eric and his crew. So I think that is, is worth, is as enjoyable as, as to look at and to imagine in a perfect sense. It, it, it could be a, a turn into something that is more challenging, that's worth.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
You know. Circulation really has not changed. We're really looking at that larger loop on the, on the raised platform side. The accessible route does go up and over the platform. So those are all correct, correctly graded for wheelchair and access needs. A ground level view looking across the street. You can, you can kind of see those are, you know, there's these little flaps here on these, on the base of each bollard. Once this bollard's come up, those flaps close or are locked down. So they don't become a trip hazard or a problem. They would just, they would, they would close up and become flush.
Yeah, that's really cool. And it's good to remember. I, I love the discussion about the parking and how that might evolve over time. And then whenever this is closed, obviously there won't be cars there. Those bollards won't be there. And then it's really achieving that vision of all the way across. And then when there's traffic on the street, there might be a couple cars parked there and that kind of buffers it a little bit and hems it in. So I think it's a great, not a compromise in a bad way, but a compromise between all the competing uses and realities of the site.
Yeah. Something to think about when pricing this. To come in with that small little square of asphalt for, for this area actually was more expensive than concrete. And, and concrete by far is, is the, the preferred choice for longevity and in savings over time. It's also consistent with Main Street's street section. So you, you know, we're showing it as a consistent kind of color and material with, with, with the roadway concrete. That could also be a special paving, you know, a different color. It could be more fun. It could be more creative. This whole street could be more fun and creative. It, it, it can really function in a different manner, as long as I think those travel lanes are delineated. So just something to think about that, you know, that is available there.
Cool.
You know, this, this piece has not changed. We're just looking at those, those comfort pieces of, you know, where is the canopy? Where are those planter beds? And then how does seating function? As a reminder, the, the pink kind of rectangles or seating areas are more of these informal kind of free use areas that can become seating or perhaps some sort of, I know my kids would not sit on them, but do something else perhaps. And then the yellow ones would have backrests and be more of that, kind of provide that, that formal support. Chacos Legacy. Terry and Chris, you really, there, you know, two big things that we learned about them. I love the hummingbird story and this idea that it would, these, these hummingbirds could be a partnership with Carbondale Arts and thinking of that being kind of a, this, this light and shadow, you know, play, kind of looking over and traveling with the sun, just seemed like a really exciting idea. Very kind of creative and, and not so literal, which I, I know Charlie really appreciated in talking with him. And, and then those planter beds, you know, just gets back to that core beautification and, and greening downtown Carbondale. You've all seen this before. This is really just kind of showing how with current tent size, current ice rink size, how it actually does all fit with this new sign. And here, here's kind of that, that bollard piece. Those yellow circles show where they would sit generally or be located generally. The reason they curve like that is the bike parking, additional bike parking is, is located down here. So the bollards are really being used to delineate vehicular locations from non-vehicular. So essentially it's protecting the bike racks. Since they're in a kind of a non-traditional location, you know, really kind of pedestrians, multimodal is taking over, so to speak. And here we get down to it. So for this process, we looked at general numbers in the mid-valley when they were available from, from recent projects. We tried to be conservative. We, you know, tended to lean high if there was a question on any, any item here. To the point where we, we did use a 15% contingency in there, as you can see. And then we also showed project escalation, something that we're doing with projects these days, just given what has been happening over recent years. It's you know, so often we are used to phasing projects and that have, not having a massive impact on, on budget. Whereas it is, is truly changing things these days. And for some communities, it's, it's changing how they look at phasing and mobilization for projects. This does not include the, the undergrounding in the alley of, of that overhead power line. Yancy did estimate about $250,000 would, would cover that work. And happy to answer any questions. Just remember, this is a very, this is a schematic level price estimate. And, and so it will only be refined more as the design process proceeds on, of course.
Thanks, Nick. I mean, maybe Eric, maybe you could give us a quick overview of kind of what's next. So hopefully we'll discuss this, take a vote to approve the schematic level design and then what?
Yeah. So in next year's budget, we do have some money that's allocated for, to take the schematic design to design document level. And, and then we also have that land and water shelter fund that we've applied to. And, and that is a, almost a two-year process. You know, as far as, as timing to, to move forward with the design documents is fine for that, that grant process. We really won't know much about the grant until probably, let me pull that up because I did. Probably until March of 2025, we'll know if, if our, our grant is, is getting pushed to the next level of that funding.
Okay.
Right now, there's 13 grants being, being asked of that fund. So it, it'll be a competitive process like all grants are these days.
And they'll only give out one order.
No, so they did about five, five million and change.
Yeah, so about five million.
And they prioritize all 13 projects and starting with number one, and, and there's various asks. For Chacos, we asked about one for one million. Some were far less than that and someone for the, the total available of 1.25. They start with the, the first, the kind of the leader in the prioritization and when, and they get as far as the money goes. So that could, you know, conceivably if the, all the lower cost projects were highly prioritized, the money would last for more projects. And conversely, if, if all the big dogs were, it would go quicker. The one thing that, you know, Chacos has a few things going for it. I'm talking with the grant administrator and working with her so closely, as Eric and I had the opportunity to do. The land is already owned by the town. The town has already shown really great process and intent on this. And it's an urban project. A lot of projects they do are more associated with open spaces. There's a kind of a consistency with trails and parking lots and kind of that where maybe it's, it's the optimist in me, but there, I think there's something that Chacos offers that they don't usually get to see. So that was, and, and that was reflected to us by the grant administrator. So that was kind of cool to hear.
Yeah. So, so I don't think we should slow down on the design document piece of this. I think we should continue with that. We won't really know if we're being, you know, requested to, to put in a grant to the National Park Service. Being, you know, requested to to put in a grant to the National Park Service. Until September of of next year. And with with contracts being written in October and November. And then you could start on the park park project, being started actually working on the park portion, because. The the grant is written for the park portion itself, not for the undergrounding, not for the infrastructure. They they would only fund the park portion of the of this project, so. So that's why Nick in the in the next slide kind of broke out just some phasing approaches too, I think that'll. That you'll see.
So option one on your left is a successful grant approach. And it kind of the the most recommended where, you know, you take care of power lines. In twenty twenty-five, it's outside of the grant scope, and it it takes care of that important piece of infrastructure. From there, then you start with Chacos and you move left using the grant dollars. Alternatively, number two is an unsuccessful approach. That looks at kind of a similar start, but it it breaks the Chacos into. Kind of the only simple way we could see phasing it is to break off that the front portion, or I'm sorry, the. The northern portion along Main Street, so you're kind of taking care of the the central lawn and down, and then. You do do Chacos, kind of take care of the right-of-way to deal with the grade issues. And then do the plaza on on the west, and then the frontage is kind of the final phase. That middle one does take the longest, looking at closing that one out in in two thousand twenty-eight. And then the last one is a fourth street priority, so that's where the right-of-way on fourth street would be taken care of. Along with kind of that grading, those grading revisions. First, along with the undergrounding of the power lines, and then from there, kind of working way back around counterclockwise. Similar to that middle approach.
So we, I mean, just looking at twenty twenty-five, which we're, you know, looking at our budget here in a few moments. Eric, is there? I can't remember off the top of my head, and we're about to talk about the capital improvement plan too, but. Do we have money in here to start some of this work in twenty-five or just the design documents?
Yeah, we have two hundred thousand for the design documents, and then. And we do have, you know, if we want to move forward with that undergrounding, there's some money there to to do that, that's in in reserve, so. So that that would probably be. You know, what we could we could accomplish, you know, design documents and that undergrounding right now if we.
Okay, so it seems like all three isn't really, we're not really doing that right now.
Yeah, it would, it would be a.
It's sort of like we're doing all one or all two, and then if we don't get the grant, it's all two, and if we do get the grant, it's all one. Okay.
Yeah, that's that's probably, you know, the the way it would would roll, or, you know, it just gets pushed, we have three. Years, if we get the grant, all three could be possible, because we have three years to complete the grant, so. So we could not start that phase one until two thousand twenty-six too, so we would then fund it out of next year's budget, so. And that's kind of in the capital improvement plan too, that's where we saw that big expenditure.
Okay.
For the five-year come from.
All right, any other questions, comments from the board?
We can use those Excel funds, of course, is that what you're thinking for the overhead?
Yeah, for the undergrounding, yeah.
Just because this will be our last time, just great, great project, I'm really impressed with. Design and honestly, the phasing approaches here is a lot of information presented. As as well as it possibly can be, which is impressive, like, it's impressive, I think I could see this sort of format being used for capital improvement. writ large on some level. I really like that, just wanted to really reiterate to whatever extent possible that we keep in mind shade, I know we began this process. In the winter solstice-ish, you know, and so I think it maybe wasn't top of mind for most folks. In the the phone booth, you know, to put, to realize that it's blazing hot in. During the farmers markets, and and we still will have a lot of hard hardscape underfoot. So whatever we can do, my one thought there, and I know Eric had brought up, or we had we had. Passed around, you know, some some ideas with like potentials for sale, shade, you know, hanging shade sort of stuff. If there's any way that that we need to engineer, you know, with lamp posts or with the the. The shade structure itself, the ability to pull a wire across and and do something more shade oriented. Let's just like, let's let's think about those, you know. Let's let's be open to that, and so that if we need to over-engineer a little bit to do something like that, maybe we take care of it when we can. And I will put in my final request to make sure that we have a place for a fire pit in the wintertime.
Right, yeah, well, that large courtyard that, Chris, you are not totally in love with, was kind of that space. To not, you know, ravage the lawn, but yes, yes and yes to shade. My phone is blowing up, all farmer's market season, one of the joys of being a local in this project is. Everyone had, you know, wanted to weigh in, and and shade was really the the number one. Public service request, as as one resident put it, I'm excited, I think this is great, awesome, thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, other questions, comments, thoughts?
I guess my only thing is, I guess, we we have a big project going on in the CIP with the. Or immediate thing with the launchpad, which is the HBAC, right? But do we have any kind of idea of like, we want to try to think about bathrooms over there or like that? Upgrading that aspect of it, I guess, I don't know.
Yeah, that's it's, it is another project, but it does seem like it's worth having on our radar that we discussed restrooms around this and and. Thought that's probably where they would be, is the town investing in an improved public restroom. At the front of Launchpad, because the current one's pretty inadequate, they could be open, not just at Launchpad hours, that sort of thing. So yeah, I think we just have to keep it on the list as we as we move forward.
On on the list and also. Electrical service to Launchpad, my guess is they might not have all they need. And especially if we're gonna do more things, like add electric heaters, electric air source heaters. Being really sure that when we underground, we're also making sure there's a lot of potential power that could go to the Launchpad. It's a, it's a underappreciated. Part of the energy transition is having enough electricity.
And so you have under over, under undergrounding the overhead power lines on the alleyway, but isn't there one that goes across Main Street? And do we have any like solution to that, or?
So it's interesting, what we found out about that one is that is not a power line.
It's a guy wire, right? Yeah, that's what I thought it was, but, okay. Well, it saves like a hell of a lot of money.
Well, yes, it also creates a a different challenge, so that guy wire, which is literally the length of a block to the alley over at the livery. There would need to be an alternative mode to or.
Method.
Ah, I'm gonna let this person speak to it.
Welcome, we're we're really just kind of wrapping up, but we just got into talking about the the guy wire that goes across Main Street, that's right, where you walked in. So if you want to address that, you can jump right in.
Well, I'll try to do the best I can, I've had communication with Sam Wakefield on a little bit. She said she wasn't sure what option was the best yet, and so until we go into that design. Contract with Excel Energy, we don't know that answer. That's why. The budget I put together is probably a little elevated, because there's some unknowns on her side. Hopefully it's not near that, but I felt for budget purposes, that's where that number came from.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Jess, anything? Not seeing you unmute, so Christina, anything? Okay.
We didn't talk about, I didn't talk about any of the utilities or underground stuff, since Yancy wasn't here, I I know we're probably pressed for time. But if if there were questions around grading, drainage, underground utilities. We, you know, that that, those questions could be asked.
I think we're trusting that all that has been addressed, and so.
Yeah, I think quite well for this level of sketch.
Great. Great. Okay. Want to make a motion, Erica? You look like you do.
Yes, I do.
We don't have one, so I think it's just to.
Move to approve the Chacos Park. Final draft SD master plan, I'm just kidding, the Chacos Park final master plan. I second.
Okay, so motion by Erica, second by Christina, any questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thanks so much for all your work on this, Nicholas and Yancy and Eric for shepherding it along, and we sure look forward to next steps.
Thank you for that opportunity again.
Let's take a five-minute break, come back, and we've got a couple more big items.
That's a record. That's a record.
That wasn't, that wasn't like. Yeah, there's there's another.
You're gonna bill an hour though.
Thank you for running up on that one. Everything you saw is. Well, and and honestly. Finishes, materials, we are actually. Well, and it's in Seafarm, isn't mine. Yeah, so frustrating. So do you have? Even down to. It could sit the way it is for a while, but it will just be more expensive.
That's, yeah, that's the scary part, and and it's just not, it's not a comfortable space now, I mean, I felt the same way. We have to leave here, because there's no shade.
I mean, they're not bad, straight, it's sort of like, whatever you dance, like high school kid. Or or like intermediate high school kid, to the extent I told Ryan, like, sometimes I'm like, oh, those are dominant, like, I can. Tell, they're bright, like, but the other ones are, just have a little more color to them, they're one, actually, they're kind of new, kind of new to me. But I have them on a couple of my violins, I really, really like them.
Yeah, you might want that.
She's playing so well, it's super fun, so we just decided today, we're doing. Because we're too big for that. Did you get that? Yeah, we just, Sarah and I talked this morning, and I was just like, I wasn't looking forward to it, because it's, it's not realistic. And so I think we'll try to make a big deal out of a big holiday community sing-along.
Okay, looks like we're about ready. Let's carry on with our evening, we've got three pretty big items still left to go, so capital improvement plan. Community grant requests, and then the second draft of our proposed budget for twenty twenty-five. So let's dive in first with the capital improvement plan, we've got the whole team here to present that. So yeah, let's hit the highlights, and then we'll ask questions, please.
Right on. So. You know, the capital improvement plan is really a tool that the board can use. And the community can use to look forward to some of the larger expenses that we're anticipating.
Yeah, is this better? That's great, all right.
So, capital improvement planning is a tool that the board and the community can use for. Looking at long, longer-term time periods than annual budgeting, and so we can plan for some of those larger expenditures. Planning doesn't necessarily mean figuring out how to save all the money ourselves, sometimes that includes grant funding, some. You know, some of the other projects in here that we'll talk about are included in funds that have their own dedicated source of funding already. So. The the key thing here is. For the twenty twenty-five budget that you'll be looking at later in the meeting. Everything you see in here is included in that budget number. So I included a couple of. Summaries. On the second page of that memo, and, you know, there's some big numbers in that, you you know, you're looking at the general fund. Three point three million, four million, eight point four million. And for some of you that have been on the board a little longer than others. Those are substantially different numbers than you're used to seeing in there, and they're bigger. But I would point out again, what's in the twenty twenty-five column, even in the general fund summary, is. Already included in your budget, so from a, is this feasible perspective? Twenty twenty-five, yes. You know, you look at twenty twenty-six. There's, out of that four million dollars, there's three million of that made up in three projects. Chacos Park. The roundabout and Millen overlay on Village Road. And when I mentioned that Millen overlay on Village Road, that's substantially higher than you've seen in the past, and that's a. Reflection of both construction costs and the. What I've heard from public feedback, both from the age-friendly group and what we heard in MAP is. You know, we should think about doing some traffic calming on there too, as part of a project like this. The big expenditures in. You know, twenty twenty-seven, that's the eight million dollar year. I I don't think that that's feasible for us to plan on doing ourself. With the caveat that we will go after grant funding for that. But there's also other ways we can do it ourself. Without having to have that money in the bank. If it's important to the community, you know, bonding. Those sorts of things, so something to think about moving forward. You know, five million of that is the roundabout, there's another Millen overlay, similar concept on Hendrick Road. Where that would also be, it would be a road reconstruction, but it also. Potentially incorporate some traffic calming, which we would hope to try out. Actually is. Jared, still here? I never get this word right, tactical urbanism. Where hopefully over the next couple of years, we could try some things, collect some data before and after. To see what works and see what the community's in favor of, and then those could be incorporated into that project as well. So I guess from my perspective, it's feasible with an asterisk. Um, when you look down at the other fund summary, you know, the vast majority of those, except for, um, the affordable housing, which is yet to be determined, are already in funds that generate their own money. So for example, you know, the second one down is the proposed crossings at, near Nislandic and Went. I'm proposing to put those in the streetscape fund because that is one of the listed, um, uses for that tax is pedestrian safety improvements. We've got a little over a million dollars in there now, and it generates between three hundred and fifty and four hundred thousand dollars a year. So it seemed an appropriate place to put it without burdening the general fund. So I would believe that all of those in the other fund summary are feasible as they exist. So I don't know if you guys had anything else to add about the summary.
And, and we did a deep dive on the water and wastewater last time, so.
Yeah.
That, that was really helpful so that we don't have to dive into those right now.
So I, any questions on the summary?
No, this is great. Um, but picking up on your, your comment about some of these numbers might be beyond our ability to do by ourselves. Um, I think it'd be really valuable for us to have like a municipal finance workshop where we bring someone in and we talk about all the different ways we can do this. Bonding, borrowing, you name it. Um.
Like the town center thing too, maybe more so even.
Yes, yes, especially so. Um, especially since there's no guarantee the light tech works. So, um, I'd really think, I think this'd be really valuable, given the water conversation we had last time. Uh, just so we know what our tools are moving forward. Um, because I know we have significant goals and we also have, uh, increasing costs that we have no control over. And just being really, um, thoughtful about how we might be able to, you know, work our financing options going forward instead of waiting until the last moment and then it's like, ah. So I, I'd love to try and schedule something like that in 2025. Um, just so we have a better sense of what are our general options. What, what's our capacity? You know, what can we do? And I think we're going to learn a lot, you know, going forward from what the wastewater side of things is going to be. And I mean, there is a bit of money in there, but it might not be enough. So, uh, what are our options? Thank you for putting this together.
No, I, I think that's, I think that's a really good idea because I think it's important for you guys to understand. Because, because you said, you know, it, it might point out there's a limit. And then how do you prioritize? Um, you know, from the water and wastewater side, I won't, I won't start that workshop now. But one of the tools that we have available to us that we have not tapped into, but we, we are on a list so we could, are, are those state revolving loan funds? And we are prepared for those funds to be accessed if necessary and if we're successful by keeping up that list that they ask for every year. Scott did a really good job of adding to it this year and making sure that things were covered, so. Great. Um, you know, a few of the highlights and what kind of tag team this as we roll through the memo. Um, the town facilities and Lauren, feel free to jump in because a lot of this is your work. Um, fence around the public works yard, that thing really does need to be replaced. It's been a long time, but we do have a need and a desire to keep folks out of there at times. Um, there's a quarter of a million in there for HVAC improvements here at Town Hall in conjunction with that electrification grant that we got. Um, there's also some money in there with, uh, the potential adding of positions for doing some modifications to this building, um, to accommodate additional staff.
They have no seats.
Um, questions about town facilities?
I mean, Lauren, do you want to add anything? I, I think your thoughts about kind of the lobby and the entrance and stuff are interesting too, that you mentioned.
Sure. Um, you know, the money that I put in here for improvements to Town Hall is really just a placeholder because there are so many different options. You know, if long-term, if we were talking about, you know, five to 10 years, you know, we may choose to do something that's more of an addition to the building as opposed to a rearrangement of what's already currently in the building. But it strikes me that, um, first of all, we have all these, uh, windows. You know, we have the building department window and the cashier window and the police window. And not a one of them is ADA accessible. Um, and we have this big lobby out here that is mostly wasted space. Um, and sometimes if we, you know, in thinking about it, we really, most people, if they're just coming in to pay a bill, they have no reason to walk up and down the hallways. And we're happy to see them, but there's no reason why they have to go from office to office looking for where they pay their utility bill or what have you. So we're just trying to figure out, do we take two bigger offices and make them into three offices? Do we figure out how to not have so much wasted space in the copy room? You know, can we rearrange that, maybe move a conference room in there? So we're just brainstorming at this point. Um, but there are, I think, some good options. This building was not built in a way that, um, makes growth easy. And, but I, but I think there's enough room that if we're creative and, um, we get an expert involved who can really figure out what that might look like for us. We can buy ourselves some time and then try to figure out what's, what's up for the future. Because the way government is going, unless we end up just everybody's remote, right? We're, we're public facing people, this is public service. Um, I, I don't see the town staff or the need for office space getting smaller like it might in a, some sort of corporate something in a, in Denver. So, um, so we're trying to be creative and, but we're going to have to do something fairly quickly if we want to hire people and, and be able to give better service to the public.
Yeah, I think it's just good for the board to understand, like, it's a large number. It's two hundred and eighty thousand dollars as a placeholder, but it's for a pretty significant sort of, I'd call it a refresh to Town Hall. And I like focusing on that public, um, interface there. Because right now you walk in and yeah, there's all these different windows and usually all the blinds are closed and you don't really know where to go or what to do. So I think having one main place to come and it's always staffed, um, would be a, a huge benefit. And just rethinking that a little bit and then, yeah, using all the space a little bit better.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what will be possible, but I think something will be.
Yeah.
So, and whether or not that's enough money, I have no idea at this point, but we had to put something in there.
Yeah, no, I was just gonna add to your comment. So that's a huge echo chamber out there.
Mm-hmm.
Always has been.
Yeah.
And it'd be great to find a way to dampen the sound so people can actually have a conversation out there and we don't have to hear it.
Yeah.
Um, and it is a big space. I don't know if it's needed. But what you just did, I think, is a great example of what we, I'd like to see for all the buildings. All our buildings need to be somewhat reimagined and, or at least talked about in terms of uh, need to have, would like to have, uh, and timeframe. Um, because the, the launch pad's a great example, we own that.
Mm-hmm.
In retrospect, we would have known, oh, they're going to be up for a heating system. It's in the capital improvement plan, go.
That's, that's in the budget too.
I know, I know, I saw that, which is great. But we were talking about, oh, it'd be great to think of it as almost a connection to Chacos Park. Restrooms, oh, capital improvement plan. Uh, does it need a new roof? The town just had a roof issue. That's an even older, that's an even older building. Uh, I know for a fact their windows are failing. So I, I'd love to see us identify all the public, like Thompson House. Almost, they almost have their own category, all the things we got to do to Thompson House. Now, that doesn't mean we do them all, but we should know what they are so we can answer public questions about what the heck's going on with the Thompson House. Um, so I, I think this is a great start, but I'd really love to see Rec Center. You talked about the, we gotta replace the, uh, the skylights. Uh, potentially we're replacing that floor. What's the timeframe? So, so we really have a sense of not only, uh, what we're facing, what's it potentially cost. And then we're back to this, how are we going to finance all this stuff?
Right.
And how do we, how are we smart about it? But we can only do that if we know what they are that we're potentially trying to finance.
And the minute you start looking.
Believe me, believe me, I work in a building.
Have you looked at, have you looked at the support poles in the back of the restaurant?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, you're absolutely correct.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's sort of a facility assessment. I mean, there's a process, you know, you can hire firms to do that and they do it and they put it all in a database and you prioritize it and filter and all that. So, um, that sounds like a, something that we probably need so that we're not surprised when an HVAC unit goes out or a roof needs to be replaced or whatever.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, let's, let's stay on track here. Um, what else, Kevin, would you like to highlight?
Um, real quick, police has, um, a couple of vehicle replacements in there with EVs. And that also includes, uh, putting chargers out here in the back, I believe ten of them. Um, so that's a nice positive step forward. We'll see how those work out. Eric.
Yes, so, uh, out of the general fund, you know, we're, we're looking at the Chacos Park mess plan implementation to that. We've just talked about that, so. Um, the other things we're looking at is that irrigation system improvements, um, really to preserve the Thompson House. Um, we're going to pull the irrigation off the building, make a buffer zone around that building. Um, so the water isn't affecting that foundation. Um, so that's, that's in next year's plan. We are also, um, adding ADA water fountains to, to our, um, to our parks. And to do that, we need to add concrete access pads to those. So that's in the budget and that'll be at Meadows Miners in the North Face Park. Um, and those are going to be, um, frost-free fountains. So we're, we're, the technology's catching up to that and we can put a frost-free fountain, um, in our parks now and have water in our parks year-round, which we've always had to shut them down. So that'll be a good improvement.
Nice. It's fine in the middle.
Yes, long arms. Um, you probably don't care, but there's a couple of server replacements that are in there for next year in 2027. Um, jumping into fleet replacement, the 2025 budget does include about four hundred thousand dollars to replace our motor grader. Um, that's a pretty big expenditure, but it's one that doesn't come around that often.
Can you tell us laypeople what a motor grader does?
Um, maintains all of the gravel roads that we maintain and alleys. It also is an integral piece to our snow removal operation where we plow to the middle. Because typically, I, I wouldn't say typically, oftentimes in the later season, we plow and then we'll pick up the next day. And when it gets super cold, that freezes into a solid chunk of ice and we actually have to hit it with the motor grader to basically break it up so we can pick it up. You don't see it out that often, but it's, it, it's not used every day and I would never attempt to say it is, but with the alleys, um, we use it over at Red Hill to maintain the access as well as the parking lots. Um, I don't know if you guys even know this, but we actually take care of White Hill, the gravel portion all the way up to the cemetery. We do Blue Heron Lane out to our, um, Roaring Fork Well Field. Yeah, the River Park. So the, it, it gets used outside of town limits, bound town property as well. And we do some work out at the rodeo grounds with it as well.
Great, thanks.
Yep. Um, I'm kind of excited about the next one. Um, that also includes, uh, two EV replacements for some, two more Ford Lightnings for one for the Parks Mo Crew and one for the Town Arborist. Um, one of the real cool things about that is they both use battery-powered EGO equipment regularly. And those things can be outfitted with EGO chargers so they can actually charge while they're out in the field instead of having to come back to town or to the public workshop to do that. So I think that'll be pretty nice for them as well. The streets portion includes finishing Eighth Street. And I always hedge my bets, but you can probably ignore that 2026 if necessary, we'll get it finished next year.
That finished, I know we phased it intentionally for a lot of reasons, but it'll feel like it's been going on forever to those neighbors at some point.
Actually, the, the reaction from the neighbors has been very positive of not having the whole street torn up like we did on the other side all at one time.
Great.
Um, yeah, and, and some of them have even flipped from, I don't want you working in front of my house, to that looks really nice. When, when are you going to finish up? So.
Good here.
Um, it also includes, uh, costs associated with potential easement acquisition and continued design work on the Industry Place Roundabout. It includes initial funding for the design of the Highway 133 crossings that we talked about earlier. And we'll get into a little more detail on the Highway 133 stuff, um, a little later. And then, as I pointed out, those two Millen overlay projects that will expand into probably traffic calming and pedestrian improvement projects on Village and Hendrick in future years.
Great.
You brought, brought you.
Um, so, so in our recreation sales and, um, use tax fund, um, you know, obviously, uh, new aquatic facility, we're gonna get that thing moving and done. Um, but also included is, um, the finishing piece of the Crystal River Restoration Project, which is literally the interpretive signs. That's, that's the last piece really to finish up that, that project. So that's, um, in design right now and, and we'll go into production. Um, and we'll be scheduled for install in March of, of 2025. So, um, and then, you know, our Rec Center's starting to show its age, so just some, some monies in the budget, um, to start fixing up some failing pieces of the building and equipment over there. So, um, you know, there's some equipment in, involved in that, but then there's also some, uh, you know, building, maintenance that, that is necessary. So, so we're, we're, we have that in, in the fund also. Um, the, wanted to just talk about further on in the rec sales and use tax fund. Um, the capital improvement plan does include the replacements of the Kennedy Park bathroom. That'd be our first bathroom that we replaced. That's our oldest bathroom in our park system and the one that's being dinged by, um, Sursa too. So it, it just, that's, that's definitely first in line. Um, and then Miners Park would be our second bathroom replacement in 2028. So those are kind of scheduled, um, one every two years, starting in 2026, so. That's how, that's how that works.
Yeah, and I think water and wastewater, we've talked about those. Unless anybody had any questions, I don't think there's anything new.
Good with it?
Okay.
Okay. I'll just keep passing the mic. I'm just here to be a pretty face.
You do that so well. Um, as we talked about a little bit earlier, kind of wrapping that up before we jump into 133. Um, we're going to continue to evaluate the Affordable Housing Fund and fill those numbers in as we look to, um, not only, uh, potential work over here at Town Center, but also just acquisition of employee housing units in general.
Do we have a time scheduled with Art Space?
Next, uh, next Tuesday.
Oh, okay.
He'll be here for an update. He'll be here in person.
Great.
Yeah. I mean, I continue to feel that our best, uh, way to address our staff housing needs for the, you know, town staff is to go all in on that project and help make it happen and reserve a few units for our town staff right across from Town Hall. I, I think there, it'll take a while and I know that we have urgent needs. Um, but I, I, uh, yeah, that's just how I see that. Um, because we could start trying to acquire a unit here and a unit there and it would be faster. But I feel like we're going to need every bit of momentum that we can conjure to get something to happen at Town Center. So I feel like in my mind, our staff housing strategy is, is Town Center, but.
Couple of thoughts on that. I, I think that's going to take a while. Uh, so one of the things that I have done and that is in, the budget for the Affordable Housing Fund for next year is some money to master lease some apartments for employee housing. We don't have to, you know, if it costs us $50,000 a year, um, to get, I forget how many, three units or what have you. That's a lot less than three units at 900,000 apiece. Um, and it buys us some time. But I do think that there are some, um, other needs for larger housing, three bedroom house perhaps, or, you know, that, that we should have some variety. Obviously that's a prime, where am I? That's a prime opportunity over there at Town Center, but, um, but I'm not sure we should put all of our eggs in that basket for future employee housing. But whether we get three or four or five units out of that, um, that will definitely be helpful. But I don't think we can just sit on it and not do anything until that's built. Because we're, we're having a hard time. We're having a hard time keeping police officers. We just lost one because we can't provide our housing, can't guarantee our housing. So I just wanted to.
I, I, yeah, that's a great point. We, we definitely need to try and move this thing along. But I agree with Lauren, I think, and it might not be we're buying $900,000 homes. We can't afford to do that, but
Right.
do we try and buy into the Habitat project in Glenwood Springs for 150? Then then gets financed with one of our employees. I mean, could we consider even the down, the buy down program, the good deeds program? Is that a possibility for some people? I think just leaving it open, I, I'm,
Right.
I mean, let's see what opportunities. I love the master lease idea. Even if we got everything we wanted tomorrow, it's three years before it opens. I mean, I'm just really, I just would love to.
My only concern.
To move some steps out. I totally agree with Ben's interest in moving it forward, but I think we want to be a little more open to pick and choose. And maybe we, we tailor it to base what's, what's the employee want? What are your needs? Let, can we work something for you?
We're working on that too, surveying the employees.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Okay. Sorry to distract us from capital improvements. Um, with Highway 133 and Kevin and Lauren, I've talked about this a lot is just sort of how to address this or how to approach this. I want to just watch our time a little bit because we still need to do community grants and look at the overall budget and it's eight 15. So I think Kevin and I have discussed some ideas and there's, there's a lot here and there's money in the budget. Maybe you can tell us how you've budgeted for it so far. I think that'd be a good start. Um, and then we can talk about sort of what, what other information do we need? What other process or documents or, um, guidance do we need, um, to start, uh, executing on some of these projects? Maybe we could start with just sort of how it's budgeted so far.
So currently there are the three main projects, as I'll call them, included in the CIP. The Roundabout, which we've been working on for a while, that's spread out over the next several years. And then we added crossings at Nice Lannick or near Nice Lannick and near Went for design for next year construction in 2026. And, and what I'll throw out there is I know there's a strong desire from a lot of people to get those things done sooner rather than later. But I went through quite a few things in this memo that we really need to consider and take a, a dive into. It's not as simple as just putting a spot on the ground and going, that's a good place for a crossing, go build it. You know, we need to look at it as a corridor concept, not necessarily an individual crossing. That being said, if we do it in that fashion where we're looking at the entire corridor, those things, there, there's not a magic sequence of do this, then do this, then do this. At the risk of repeating myself for Chris from the other night, this is the point where I get crucified. The beautiful thing is we have the latitude to do that. Because we are not evaluating a, an intersection that has 100 crashes a year versus one that has 80 crashes a year versus one that has 102 crashes a year. And having to make a decision on what problem are we going to fix? These are going to be enhancements to our multimodal network. And as long as they're done in a fashion that considers the whole corridor, I think we're okay.
And so we have this phase for design for the two, uh, new crossings in 2025, implementation of those in 2026. Some work on the roundabout access easements, design, all that in both years. And then potential, if we have the money, three years from now, um, doing a roundabout in 2027. Correct. So I think that's, that's big picture. And what I've talked to Kevin and Lauren a lot about is I feel like we need something to bring all this together and sort of memorialize it. Like we've got the access control plan from 10 years ago. It's a hard to read, very technical document. Um, we've got the really great information from Age Friendly and their Highway 133 study. We've got the Mobility Access Plan. Um, we've got our Capital Improvement Plan. And in my mind, and I'd love board feedback on this, what I've been asking Kevin for as a next step would be, you know, some sort of schematic where we can look at it and say, here's, here's this area of the Highway 133 corridor. And here are proposed improvements and here's how they're going to address the known issues, including Dolores Way. Like we heard loud and clear when we were dealing with the restaurant, that we can't ignore Dolores Way. So we have to have evidence and we have to really be, all of us have consensus that like these improvements are going to help resolve that issue as well. And here's about what they're going to cost. And here's how we think we might phase those. Cause I feel like it needs to be something that stands up over multiple election cycles, senior staff changes, new people coming in the community that we point to that. And so I'm not proposing some big new process because I think we can study these issues to death and we've done a lot. But just something to kind of like put a bow on it and have it as a, we vote on it, here's the, the 133, you know, improvement plan. Um, and here's how it's going to address these issues. Um, that's, that's what Kevin and I discussed today. That seems like, um, something we can do without a huge process and another year of consultants and public input. So I'd love board feedback on that as like taking this from this to something, I think it needs to be visual. And I think it needs to have numbers on it and potential years on it. And like, here's how each of these things works together on it.
I think that sounds like a great idea because I think making it easy to understand, um, for us, for new staff that show up, but also for the public. So they know we've done these different studies. We've got really engaged groups of people and then here's how we're mapping that out. And even, um, I mean, the template that we just saw in the Chacos Plan, like Ross pointed out, kind of a, we can also have a couple of options for how this could be phased or what our thoughts are. Just so it's really transparent on how we're, how, how long it can take to kind of push some projects like this forward. Um, and then kind of what our plan is. Um, and then we even have incorporated like a financing discussion for the bigger items where we're like, okay. And then we're going to either, we decide we're going to go after A, B, or C as our funding ideas for the big ticket items or something. I think I would really, I would love that. And it sounds like a, a process that this group would enjoy being a part of as well.
When, when we did the access control plan, was that a C dot initiated thing or was that a town initiated thing or?
It was a C dot initiated process. To the best of my knowledge, I was not here at the time. But I believe we may have been one of the first communities in Garfield County that actually went through the process and kind of built consensus at the time and approved it.
I just think in that process, obviously trying to get them at the table with us as early as possible and really try to make it as collaborative and have them at, with us on it as much as possible, I think is a good way to go. Just because everything has to go through them anyway. So if it's kind of more kind, if they're there at the making this too, they'll be willing to eat it or whatever. So.
Yeah. Oh, no. I just want to not, I mean, I, I think, I think this all makes sense. And I, I mean, of course we should have a, I would look forward to having a, a real comprehensive plan with, with multiple directions that we can go. At the same time, I, if there is any way that we can deal with pedestrian traffic, I feel like that we, we don't, I feel like we're kind of studying it to death already. And to wait for more design efforts to, to, to put it, to wrap a bow around it when it, there's parts of it that just seem so obvious and, and we could be completely wrong and I, I'm open to that. But, um, you know, there are people, someone's going to get killed. And this is, that's not the first time it's been said. That, and, and, and it's a very clear situation that we have three quarters of a mile, two thirds of a mile, um, that needs to be crossed by pedestrians who are pedestrian to the grocery store. Um, and, and if there's some, I don't know whether there's some sort of temporary thing, you know, we talked a little bit about that, that we can do. Um, I guess we have to stop, potentially stop traffic or at least draw attention to those pedestrians. But if there's some way we can do something in a one calendar year, um, I would hope that we take every effort possible to do that. And this board mentioned a desire to do that, I think at our last meeting. Um, so I would hate to, in, in our desire to see something really beautiful wrapped up in a bow, you know, overlook the possibility, any possibility of, of making something happen to, to allow pedestrian, notified pedestrian crossing. That's.
I mean, Kevin, could you respond to that? Like if we said, we're, we want to give direction to staff to move at the, across from City Market, Nice Lannick area and try to get that done in the next year, is that feasible?
Not in my opinion. It, it's just, it's not as simple as it seems. We have to, we have to go through surveying, we have to go through design. We, and, and I'm talking a little bit from recent experience and I'm not blaming anything. I'm just trying to be real about it. We, what we learned and we were just building the Refuge Island at Cowan is by the time we got through the design process, we were out of a construction window for that year. So I, I, I think it's, I think it's more important long-term to get the design right, which I, what I'd say, and I may be reading too much into what you just said, Ross. I think we can do the process that Ben and Eric are interested in, but not necessarily put those two crossings on hold.
Right.
I, I, I think they can be simultaneous processes.
And to clarify, I think for me, it's actually the roundabout and I, because I totally agree, like, I think we have clear direction to move forward at a crossing across from City Market. And I don't want to hold that up at all. It's the roundabout it more than anything else that I think there's not really a clear understanding that we can all articulate and defend over time for what problems that's going to solve. And so I think we need to, and, but we put money toward it every year and it's big money, you know, it's, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars and we're planning to keep doing that. So I don't want to keep doing that without fully understanding, like, are we ever really going to do that? It seems like we just need to, it's, so it's more like what's the roundabout going to do for us? And then here's these other two crossings that we're working on, but those are on a fast track. And, and I'd just like to get the roundabout, like questions settled and committed to, um, and have enough input to agree to that.
And, and I think we can do that.
Yeah.
You know, we talked a little bit about the roundabout this afternoon and, you know, one of the things that I initially said was, you know, maybe that could wait a while. But I, I thought about that a little more, particularly in the context of what we in Age Friendly heard from the community during our outreach for Map Carbon Dale and their study, which was why are we always reacting and why aren't we being proactive? The roundabout would not only, and we'll get into more detail in the future on this, but the roundabout would not only give another place to cross the highway because they are pedestrian crossings as well. But it would also be the proactive step of what happens if downtown north redevelops and all that traffic now has to spread either to Main Street or Village Road. That gives a, a proactive connection out there that maybe we won't be having those community discussions. And why did you wait until after everything was built and now you're trying to fix it? So.
Okay. So I don't think we need to decide, you know, on the roundabout right now, but I think just as a vision for going forward. And yeah, I think we all agree that there's urgency to the pedestrian crossings and it sounds like Kevin doesn't think it's feasible to get one done in the next year.
Well, I would, I would just echo, um, I appreciate everything, whatever you said and echo Ron. If you need more resources to expedite this, please ask. Because I, I really feel like this has been something that's been, since I got on the board, has been highlighted. And we haven't been able to move on it. And I feel pretty disempowered that we can't move something forward that clearly, I understand all the design challenges. I'm not blaming anybody, but I, I find that everybody knows it should be there. I know there has to be designed well, but we've known it's been, that's supposed to be there for a while. So how come we can't get it done? So that's, I, I understand the challenges, but I just want to be on record to say that it's really frustrating because it took a year and a half for us to get the crossing island. And I just don't want you guys to feel like you can't move it forward because there's enough time in the day. If, if we need help to do this, I, I personally think we should allocate more money to do it. So.
Is that the limiting factor? It doesn't sound, it sounds like to me it's a timeframe issue.
It, it's, it's not enough time in the day or being restrictive, saying, you know, you only have X amount of dollars to work. So only spend an hour on this a day. It's, it's the coordination that takes place. It's the surveying, it's, it's, it's all of that. And I, I, I appreciate your frustration. But what I would say is I think that we will have this ready to go to bid early, if not the end of this year, I would still wait until probably February or March to bid it in 2026. Just if you get too far ahead of it, then contractors are a little iffy on their pricing. But I can tell, I think I did tell you, when we tried to get a price from a contractor to do that Refuge Island, it was $270,000. And when you look at it in the context of, we want to do all these things, I, I, I think it's reasonable. Sorry.
That's all right. I just wanted to, um, tell the board something that you told me that I wasn't thinking of before. Yes, I'm giving you credit. It's okay. One of the things that Kevin told me, because we were talking about the timing and, and how we could expedite this between the surveying and the, you know, coordination with C dot and the coordination with Public Works and what have you. That's all well and good, and it all takes some time, engineering and everything else. But what Kevin pointed out to me, which I wasn't aware of because I'm not in this business, um, is that if you get your design done and you're going out to bid and now it's the beginning of the construction season, the contractors are already booked. So, and they are not going to find time for you unless you are willing to give them what one of our developers in town calls stupid money. Where, you know, just. you know, just getting somebody to actually do the job will be twice as expensive and a real crap shoot to see who's going to bid on it because they are all busy. They've all booked up their schedules, which had not even occurred to me. So I just wanted to repeat that. I hope I said it correctly. But.
I totally get it.
Yeah. It was, it was just something I hadn't thought of and I figure that many of you might not either.
It's going to be expensive regardless because they're all busy, they're all booked and we're going to pay through the nose for it, but it's life and safety. And I know, um, and some of the projects that Rafta has recently completed, they hired a project manager. And I'm wondering, is this, do we need another person? And this is what they do on a contract basis, work with CDOT to get us all the surveying, take some pressure off the staff. And this is their focus so that we're not in, ever in a situation again that we're not ready to go when we want to. Again, it's, it's a suggestion. This has been going, we've been talking about this for a while and I know everybody's busy and I know there's all kinds of processes and CDOT. But when Jess and I meet with CDOT and CDOT comes to town, they're like, well, yeah, we could put it right there. It wouldn't be that challenging. And I, I get it. It's not going to be as easy as, as people say, but I just want to push this as fast as we can.
Okay. So I think you're hearing all this urgency. I think for now, any, any other questions about the capital improvement plan? Or any concerns about what's in it for the 2025 budget? I think we've given pretty clear messaging on the highway.
I just have a question. If we're, if we don't plan to do the roundabout in till 2027, then why, can you talk a little bit, why do we keep allocating for it?
So there's been a lot of work going on behind the scenes. This, this is another one of those where we've, we came up with, I think we're on our fourth design and CDOT has finally given preliminary approval for that. So one of the next steps in that is there will be right of way acquisition necessary. So part of next year's, the amount of money in the budget for next year would be to actually go acquire that right of way. And typically, particularly if we're going for grants or any kind of state funding on that, we need to have the right of way secured before we go ask for that money. And so if we can get that done next year, then it's a matter of getting the funding packages, but together, you know, like, I don't think any of them are as long as the one Eric talked about earlier, but it, it's not like you just apply for it and then, you know, a couple of weeks later. So it, it's just, it is a process.
And it's just a single property that you're trying to acquire access from, or do you need to go to multiple people?
One main property, but all four quadrants will have some sort.
Okay.
And, and when I say some sort, like triangles and rectangles as big as this table on a couple of corners, a big piece on another corner and then more substantial than this table on another one.
I mean, I, yeah, I, I obviously want to, want to be in the position to, to do the roundabout, obviously, but it really rankles me to have us pay the same developer who failed to, like, give us enough land in the first place to build the damn thing, to go pay them more money now to build this thing. But we're, we're now buying because they didn't give us enough, they cut out a little bit, but they didn't give us enough apparently to fit a roundabout in when that was the assumption from the very beginning. And that just really pisses me off.
Well, not to unpiss you off, but keep in mind that part of the reason that the right of way acquisition is fairly substantial on one parcel out there is because we were trying to avoid impacts as much as possible to three other quadrants, all of which were not necessarily developed at that time. So it, it's, it's, it may not be as much of a function of they didn't give us enough as they didn't know we were going to move it.
It shifted in the design over time.
Right.
And there's a nice breakout on, it's a long memo, but on page 17 of the capital improvement plan, that's where you can really see each year uh, what it's being spent or what's being spent on it. And that's where I just want to make sure we get enough community consensus that we're really doing this in a few years before we keep putting that kind of money into it every year. So I think as part of that design process or some of the money for the design of the crossings, we get a, a little bit of a corridor, you know, plan. Again, that's not a huge other process. It's not a big consultant. It's not a million public meetings. We're not going to study it to death. But just something that really clarifies why we're doing this and, and what it's going to look like and, and when and what it's going to solve. Um, because I think it's going to be really hard to find the, um, will to come up with the five or six million dollars for this at any point. And you're going to have to have just absolute clarity on the necessity of it, um, that withstands the test of time.
Is there buy-in already from the Eighth Street folks? Like, or is there?
No.
No. Okay. I mean, it, will there be resist, there'll be resistance when this, when this comes to pass in that?
Who are the Eighth Street folks? You mean just people who live on?
Yeah, no, yeah, no, 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 nobody by name at all. Just, just sort of in general, is that neighborhood fine with this? Or is it, is there going to be?
And just to clarify, there's two separate things here, right? There's the roundabout and then there's an eventual connection from industry through.
Okay. Those are not one of the projects. Yeah.
But I think that should be
Okay.
drawn out through this process as well.
It's only a connection there against not the roundabout, just.
Gotcha. Okay.
And maybe it's just the way in which the connection gets done, but.
Okay. I was conflating, I was conflating this too.
Okay. Any other feedback, questions, comments on the capital improvement plan?
Um, the only thing I had questions about for next year was maybe just around trees. And like, I mean, we've lost a fair number of trees and I don't know what our plant, like if the arborist has a more robust vision for replanting trees, but it seems like that would be also something for us to try to put a little more money into of, uh, let's plant more trees than four or whatever we do on Arbor Day.
Not capital. What budget's that in? General fund. Okay.
So trees are not, I guess they're not capital. I don't know what they are. I, I don't think vehicles are capital really either, but. Okay.
We can look at that in the general fund budget in just a moment.
Well, and just in case I'm not here, yes, there's more tree planting planned for next year.
Cool.
Um, you'll see that, well, part of it is because of the EAB. You know, we removed a lot of trees.
Exactly.
We're going to replace them next year.
Yeah.
And then, um, where you'll see that is in both the parks budget and the streets budget. That it's kind of split out by
Okay.
where it goes. But yes, there's, there's going to be more than four trees planted next year.
Okay. Jess, any comments or questions on the capital improvement plan before we move on to the next item?
I would just echo the urgency of the crossings, everything that was said already.
Okay. Thank you. Um, and so you don't need to vote on this, right? This is just a, a guiding document. Okay. I think we're good. Thank you. Um, all right, let's dive into community grants. I think we have some recusals.
Yeah, should I just leave or what's the?
Yeah, I mean, typically, like, so historically, anybody on the board who is directly employed by an organization that has requested funding has recused themselves. So I did that when I worked for a small nonprofit for a little while. Dan Richardson did that under a synagogue. Luisi Anes did that when he worked for Five Point. And we typically did not fill out the spreadsheet. We stepped out for the 10 minutes that this usually takes and then stepped back in. So if anybody would like to recuse themselves, say so to the record.
Well, I'll just share what I asked Ben about. So several of the applicants are tenants of Third Street Center.
But the Third Street Center itself is not requesting.
We're not requesting any funding.
So I don't see a conflict there because you're not directly employed by an organization seeking funding. But if anybody does see a conflict, you can say so now.
No, I think we need to have a certain number of people actually.
I think, I, I just want to put out there, I think, I think this should be part of a, I, no problem this year stepping aside. However, I think, um, we are such a tight knit community, I think it does, it does make sense to maybe have a discussion about how to do this. And I could see even within this framework where we could agree to, to not, to, to, to not participate certainly in, in advocating or, or allocating of funds for our own organization that we may have, to whatever extent we have an involvement in. But also, but still, you know, and leave that blank and allow the average of, the average allocations of others to kind of speak, speak for the board. Or, or, or find some other way to kind of allow, to do it. Because I think there's something to be said honestly for, for experience in the nonprofit sector. And, and knowledge frankly of, of what some of the others do. Sometimes an, an application is incomplete, but someone might have more information about it and, and bring that to it. And I think at some point, we're just going to whittle ourselves down to, to kind of not, not being able to do it. And so I think there might be, there might be a more efficient way of recusal going forward. And I think I would like to address that before next year. That's all.
Yeah. And we have this whole topic on the work session in February.
Good.
To talk about and we can definitely address that at that time.
Sounds good.
Okay. Well, with that, just let the record show that Chris Hassig and Ross Cribs have recused themselves from this discussion because they both work for organizations that have requested funding. Jessica, you want to kick this off? Anything you'd add from the process or?
Yeah, kind of revamped the process a bit this year. You guys who have done it in the past noticed that there's a different spreadsheet. And hopefully it was a little bit easier to read, a little bit easier to understand where your requests or suggestions were going. I also included in your packets, information from a survey that was sent out, the applicant feedback survey, only 11 people out of the 55 provided answers. So take it for what you will. But it seems like the process and the amounts are generally going okay. So I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that information. That I, I tried to get some information and only a few people responded. So.
Great. No, thank you. Thank you for bringing us into the 21st century on a number of things, including this.
You're welcome.
And hopefully that's more efficient for, um, a future clerk as well. And, um, yeah, that for, easier for applicants, easier for us. It's, it's the way that we do most things, right? We do it online. So thank you for that.
Yeah.
Uh, any questions about the process before we dive into discussing these?
I just particularly appreciate the link to their application because I remember having to have multiple PDFs open on my old computer and being like, so yes, it made it really easy to get through it.
So generally how we've done this is we kind of take it as it is and we make a couple of last minute changes. The, the two that I would, um,
Yeah.
point out, um, one is this group four or five from the bottom, 1505, that seems to have no connection to Carbondale whatsoever and mentions Los Angeles. And, um, I, I can only guess that it was almost like a bot that found every grant out there and then they clicked submit. So I would recommend zeroing that one out. It's only $200, but I want to hear from the rest of the board on that because somebody put money in there for them. So.
I did not put money in.
Okay.
Yeah, I had the same point. What, what, really? LA?
I was really confused by their application. I was like, are they doing something here?
Anybody feel like we should grant $200 to that organization? Okay, hearing none. Let's, let's zero that out. Um, now we have $200 to play with.
I already know where I want it to go.
And my other one, and this one's tough, but, um, the, uh, festivals at the bottom, the Mount Hope's Music Festival and the second Sunday concerts in the park. Um, I think especially with the concerts in the park, um, we've seen that, uh, just kind of wither a little bit over time. I've talked to some of the people who've been involved in it. They acknowledge that, um, that there hasn't really been, um, you know, adequate marketing and coordination and booking bands in advance and never, nobody really knows when it's happening and, and what time it is and all that. I would propose, and I don't know about the Mount Hope's Music Festival, um, I love Steve's guitars. I love everything they do at their venue, but I don't know that this, this type of work is their strength right now, quite frankly. So I would actually propose taking those two amounts, which adds up to 6840, or sorry, 80, 8,480. And giving like, maybe we add a little more to it. Maybe it ends up being 10,000 or something like that. And having that as, uh, some sort of RFP that staff runs to say, we want a music in the park concert series. They have a meeting with the special events task force in a week or two. And they could run that by them and say, when do we want these to be? Why was it on Sunday afternoon? Do we want it to be at that time and that point? What do we want this to be? So we internally could determine what we want and then see who bids for that. I could see Carbondale Arts or Katie and Kay or some other nonprofits. I could also see somebody like Amy Kimberly, who does that kind of work, you know, for Palisade, Bluegrass and others, just as an independent promoter. I could see somebody who really does this professionally, full time, running that and, um, and doing a much better job with it, honestly. So that, I'm not comfortable giving that kind of money to the concerts in the park to the same group that ran them last year. And even looking at the application and it was late and it's unclear and, um,
It was on paper.
What's that?
It was on paper.
Okay.
There are applications for that.
And I, I mean, I have heard it's the one, not during this process, but I had a couple of people talk to me this summer and I missed all the concerts in the parks. I was out of town every one of those weekends, but, um, of just asking me like, what is going on? You know, we're really missing that. It's a key part of our community. You know, is there anything the town can do to help, um, make it thrive a little bit more? And so maybe this is our opportunity. And if the folks who have been running it want to respond to the RFP, they can still do it, but it just, it, this feels like us asking for more information and a little bit more. Because it is a chunk of money
Yeah.
that other organizations aren't getting. And so, um, yeah, I would support. I think that's a good solution. I wasn't sure, I hadn't thought of that or talked to you, but when I was putting money in, I was feeling this sense of like, how do we make sure they're going to do a good job? So, yeah.
Just a quick comment. I don't know, sorry. I don't know what the actual budget is because I know that part of how they fund it is through donations. So I have no idea whether 10,000 is the right amount. Because it really depends on who's going to do it. If it's somebody who's a music promoter, they're not out there asking Alpine Bank for $500. Um, but I, I, I think it would be fairly easy to figure that out. And it might be worth putting a little more than we think it might need in there and then seeing if we can get it done for 10 or what have you.
Yeah. I mean, maybe it's $10,000 and then, uh, and maybe they need to do some fundraising or whatever in order to, to beef it up a little bit. Any other thoughts on that? Does anybody feel that we should grant the amounts here?
I think that's a great, uh, yeah, great option. They can come in and say, we're going to do it this way or somebody else can go from there. Yeah. I think there's a lot of changes happening amongst all the people who are doing it and actually might give them an out. Who knows?
I was gonna say, they might feel obligated to keep doing it, but not have the capacity right now. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Christina, does that sound okay to you?
Yeah, I like that idea. I think it sounds good. And the 10,000, is it, so does that come out of the total?
This total is, we'll.
Kind of arbitrary.
Oh, okay. We'll talk that the $35,000 that is for sort of music and, um, arts festivals, special events. We, we don't really know where that came from. It's not what I was told it was, um, when I first got here. And, um, so we'll be talking about what that's going to look like next year and what the board wants to see that be for the 2026 budget anyway. But I think probably a good idea to just remove it from this, keep it in the same line, line item, because it's sort of a special events line item in the budget. And then just leave it blank what's getting paid to.
Okay. So it won't take funding away from one of the other charities that we're giving money to.
We don't have to go back through and subtract. That's a good question, Christina.
Okay.
So we're, but what we're proposing then is it's the 8,480 here plus a little more to get it up to around 10,000, like a round number of 10,000. And if you determine through some research that that's just not enough to do, you know, but it's like, well, how many concerts can we do for $10,000? You know, is that four?
Right, right.
Is that five? Is that three?
Yeah. Because it's certainly not getting any cheaper to bring bands to. And they got 8,200 last.
But like, I'd rather see us have three really good ones than five that nobody knows about.
Exactly.
So, um, okay, uh, those were my two, um, items. So Colin and Erica, I think you had something, um, any other?
I just had a question. Um, Youth Zone. Now, didn't they, didn't they, didn't we have this thing? You can only apply for the, the tat, the alcohol, tobacco? alcohol tobacco tax, or you could do this? You can't do both?
Yeah.
Did they know that?
But they didn't do.
They knew that last year.
But tell us what's going on with the tobacco tax this year because we haven't had that.
Here's what's going on with this, and that's a really good point, Colin. Last year, Youth Zone was given a grant. They did not apply for this last year. Because they were given a grant out of tobacco tax money. Well, this year, Roaring Fork School District isn't giving those grants of the tobacco tax money. We probably still have enough money to give Youth Zone some money out of tobacco tax. That wouldn't be out of this. But if we give them this, then we wouldn't we wouldn't be
Would be being fair to everybody.
We wouldn't be being fair to anybody to
I'm sorry, it was just my question, like, did they, did they know the distinction? And has the tobacco, is that group changed with all the people?
So I think
No, I think that I think they know that Roaring Fork School District is not running those grants this year.
Anna has no capacity to do that anymore.
Right, yeah. So it's just going towards school-based mental health funding is what that, my understanding what that request is for the year, and we haven't seen that yet. And so this would be Youth Zone's only grant request because we haven't set up a separate process ourselves to deal with this.
Is it, is it, so will we have, is all that money going to the schools or do we have any extra to?
There, there is a little bit extra.
I mean, I don't, I don't know.
A lot of it is that we really don't know what our revenue is until the end of the year, so we can budget for a certain amount. But if we tell them they're getting two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars and we only bring in two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, then, you know, and that money, which it's supposed to do, is going down. But I think there's still a little buffer there.
Well, here's my thinking. My guess is they'd get more out of that fund than this.
I don't remember what they got.
Five thousand? I mean.
I don't think they got what they, what they
And here's why.
They sent me a request for fifteen thousand dollars, just separately out of the budget.
Oh, okay.
I've been doing a little research about who else pays them. Like, are they getting paid by the school district and getting paid by the courts for the same thing that they're asking from the town? I'm trying to figure out how those payments work because it depends on who refers them. If they get referred by the school, then the school already pays them for those
My, my guess, though, is this is general operating.
It's not enough. Of course, it's never enough. But so I'm trying to figure that out because is it really, are we are we giving a grant to a nonprofit or are we paying for services?
And I think we gave them direction to apply for this because the school district wasn't running that program. So they applied for this.
Okay.
I feel like we we do this, if we do something different on tobacco later, we wouldn't hold this against them.
Okay, that's fine. That was my only question.
No, no, it's a very good point because it's a little confusing for those organizations that got grants last year. I think it was the only year, or maybe the, maybe the school board did it for two years with the grants.
Well, it was the Family and Youth Advisory Council. It wasn't, I mean, Anna was running it, but it wasn't the school district running. I just want to make sure it's clear that like, we didn't hand off the energy needs grants to the school district.
Yeah, no, thank you.
But that was my question because I actually had that same question. So I started looking at past. I was like, oh yeah, what did we agree for Youth Zone? So I accidentally left it blank, pulling their number down, averaging. And so I'm sitting here going, oh, my God. So I was like, okay, well, maybe I can get the fifteen oh five, two hundred to Youth Zone. And then there's a hundred remaining. And so if we could increase theirs by three hundred.
We could do that.
But I was feeling bad because I had all those same questions and then I sent it. It wasn't until later I was like, I never filled in anything. Oh, my God. So anyway.
Well, that seems reasonable, though. That's not a lot, but if we add the three hundred there, the one hundred that we had plus the two hundred that we Xed out, that gets them up to thirty-two hundred. And then I think we look at the tobacco tax and we see if there's a way to do more. Any other areas that people want to talk through?
I, I think maybe just to flag it for when we talk about it in February is just acknowledgement that like, there's more people applying. And I do think if we kind of maybe not lock people into categories, but it started getting like, okay, well, how many? And I have kids in our school system and I have kids in our town and we take advantage of all kinds of programs. But like, is there a better way we can allocate this money? Because every, when everybody, the more people who apply, then everybody's amount is going to start to diminish. And so, um, yeah, just acknowledging that and acknowledging any recipients who might be listening that like, yeah, is there a better way? Or maybe when we figure out what that thirty-five thousand came from, we grow our pot a little bit, or I don't know. I I just, I would love to think that through a little bit more.
Okay. Yeah, because we don't really do a competitive grant process here. Like, we're talking about our staff competing for it, and you get it or you don't. We like give everybody something.
Exactly.
Deludes them all. Okay, Jess, any groups on here you wanted to talk about more?
No, you you hit the ones I was, we're all on the same page. Thanks.
Okay, great. Okay, with that, do we, we don't need a motion on this because it'll just be part of the general budget? Okay, well, and is that crystal clear to our clerks? That we're going to do ten thousand for special events? We're going to do some sort of RFP. We're not giving fifteen oh five anything. We're giving three hundred more to Youth Zone, and that was it. Okay. Yeah, and a reminder that the predecessor to this process was that we would sit here and listen to every one of these groups come and present to us. And then we would have a all night discussion about which ones we liked and valued the most while they sat here and listened to us. So those before us, that was previous boards, but I'm so glad that somebody put this process together because it's pretty straightforward and we just talk about the margins. So I appreciate it. Okay, well, somebody can tell our fellow trustees they can come back and we can look at the
Clerk number two.
What's really the biggest item on the agenda, Greg, but save the best for last, and it's three minutes till nine, so.
So we have three minutes.
Sitting in his office deciding which corner he wanted his cot in.
I gotta be back at six AM tomorrow, so.
Three minutes till eleven here.
You have three minutes.
Blue shots tomorrow.
Blue shot at six eleven.
Blue shot.
Yeah, we just zeroed out Katie and K and the youth workers. No, just so you guys do know that what we did discuss was taking the money from the the two special event music requests, the Mouse Opus Music Festival and the uh, summer music in the park and adding a little more to it and making it a ten thousand dollar lump sum. And actually saying that hasn't been awarded to anybody yet, and staff will run an RFP for a summer music series. So we take back a little control of that and make sure that whoever runs it is really up for, uh, you know, modern day with good marketing and all that kind of stuff.
And it could be an individual, it could be an organization.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cool. Right, that one from L A that we didn't understand easier than that. It was called like fifteen oh five, some group from L A that I had no idea what their function was. Okay, Greg, take it away. Budget review. This is our second of three looks at this, I think, right?
Correct. This is our second draft. One more, we'll be adopting the budget in December. So in front of you is the second draft of the twenty twenty-five budget. Basically broke this down into four major sections between revenues, operating expenses, capital expenses, and twenty twenty-four projected expenses. Uh, the big one I really wanted to discuss tonight was revenues. The budget for revenue really didn't change between the first and the second draft. Um, but I'm really looking for input from the board to see if we should keep our revenues flat or do a small increase. Our revenue data is based on nine months of actuals, uh, where we're just about one million over our twenty twenty-three year to date actual. Uh, that equates to about an eighteen percent increase year over year. So we could basically keep our twenty twenty-five revenues conservative, which we have currently in budget at zero percent increase. We're kind of look at some of our surrounding municipalities and kind of mirror what they're doing. Uh, if you look at Aspen, they're plus two percent. Basalt is flat. Glenwood plus five. Eagle County plus two, Newcastle plus one, Pitkin plus one, and Snowmass plus one.
And here you've got Pitkin plus two and Snowmass plus three. Did that change since?
Sorry, I mistyped that. Long night. There's a Newcastle plus one, Pitkin plus two, Snowmass plus three. Uh, what you have on the paper is the accurate one there. Each percentage increase is going to equate to about a ninety-three thousand dollar increase in revenue. So first I kind of wanted to hear what the board was thinking on that matter.
And this is where everybody looks at each other and says, what are you guessing? What are you guessing? That's really, I mean, these numbers are all guesses, but you know, if there's economic trends that are happening, you can start to say, oh, it seems like this is happening, but you really don't know.
We we won't comment on what's happening with the economy. Can you remind us what the expected bump was from going to state collection?
So I don't think that there was a huge bump.
No, there was a huge bump.
Well, I mean, projected.
Oh, great. We didn't have a projected, we didn't know
Yeah, exactly.
that we were going to capture all these other
So
entities. But now that we're up at that higher level, what's the raise going to be? It's going to be inflation. It's going to be potential new, you know, new business, if there is, you know, those kinds of things. So, you know, talking to other town managers, nobody's really, you know, with the new administration, with new policies out there with, you know, we don't, nobody really knows. So when before this zero percent, that was a Christie estimate. So that's three months ago, right?
Correct.
I I don't necessarily think we have to be at zero percent. But I would also knowing that, knowing this board and knowing this town likes to be fiscally cautious um, and not really take any more risk than necessary. You know, I think we probably could imagine that, you know, prices go up at least a percent or two this year, unless we have some dreaded R word come in, but yeah, we didn't really have a projection from state collected. And part of that eighteen percent is also, we did have at least one fairly substantial new taxpayer join our rolls. That didn't come from state collected, but also I don't know that that's going to bump up any, any substantial amount from this year.
No, my, my point was that we, we can't expect that next year.
We're not going to project eighteen.
No.
Have any insight into both Basalt and Glenwood Springs being the two edges of the spectrum?
I can't, I can't, I have no idea about Glenwood Springs.
Because that seemed pretty bullish to me.
I have talked to Basalt. And honestly, the last time I talked to to Snowmass, I don't remember them being at three, so they must have bumped up a little bit. Felt a little bit more comfortable with where they were as the year got farther along. Basalt's idea was, oh, we're being careful. We don't know what's going to happen next year between politics and policies and what have you. So a lot of different factors.
I would just throw out there that I would say like one percent seems very safe. Even just with inflation, I think two or three percent seems very safe too, but it doesn't seem like we're in a like really tight situation where staff's looking for us to project a little higher so that we can do a couple more things. So I don't think we need to go a lot higher and it is more conservative and then we just build up our fund balance. But I would suggest that we do one percent. It adds ninety thousand dollars to the budget and we keep adding things to the wish list, so.
That's for sure.
Right? Does that seem reasonable?
That's always the answer, estimate one percent and get five, and go the other way around.
Right, it's like this year, we're getting the eighteen percent and we had, I think, estimated three, maybe. I can't remember what we estimated for this year.
It was two.
Two. Um, I I think the only years that we've ever gone down were like the Great Recession. And so, you know, we're not in the business of predicting those things. When they happen, we would make minute year adjustments and put the brakes on a lot of projects, so. Okay, sounds like we have board support for a one percent projection. Does that make sense to you, Greg?
Yep, crystal clear.
All right. I mean, if you came in and said, I think you should do five percent, we'd listen to you.
Yeah, I like to budget conservatively, you know, you can always make changes. Um, if something happens, you can always make cuts mid-year. But yeah, one percent seems very doable. So, um, next topic would be our operating expenditures for the twenty twenty-five budget. There's just been a couple of, you know, small changes in there. Really, the only big change you see in there is kind of adding that aquatics and wellness coordinator. This was an existing F T E. Uh, Eric came to me and said that they had found a incumbent for that position. Uh, so we decided to add that to the budget. Just keep in mind that includes benefit salary for a family and whatnot. That's why it seems kind of high. Um, then just some other small items in there that were forgot in the last round of the budget that, you know, people came to me last minute and said, I need to add this, I need to add that. So that's what you see right there under the operating expenditures chart. Uh, do you guys have any questions about that?
Cool. Did detox Lauren actually get to you with ten thousand or?
That's it, that, I went, that's what's in our M O U.
Okay.
It's ten thousand.
Great, though. That sounds right, yeah.
Then moving on to capital expenditures, I know Kevin just gave you a really long, um, you know, detailed overview of that. Um, but basically I just wanted to point out the big changes that we put into the budget between the two draft versions. Uh, the big one's going to be those highway one thirty-three crossings where you see a hundred thousand in twenty twenty-five. Also, there's eight hundred thousand in twenty twenty-six, not shown here. Um, additionally, we have the roundabout construction in twenty-six and twenty-seven for six million. Another big project on there is going to be that Launchpad HVAC. So, yeah, these items were all pretty much discussed in the last board topic. But if there's any additional questions, I can dive into it.
Like, we're good?
I think so. We had, um, I had brought up during trustee comment, increasing our contribution to Colorado Communities for Climate Action to seven thousand seven hundred. And so that might be a change from, I didn't actually find it in the like
Seven, seven, zero, zero?
Something. I'll find, I'll
I'll, I'll look it up.
Okay. And so I think that would be a cha-change of two thousand dollars. I think we give them fifty-one hundred right now or something.
I'll have to go, I'll have to go to the, to the copy of the budget that has all the notes, which, which contributions are in which line item?
Yes, seven thousand seven two twenty-five. If we could do that, seven thousand seven hundred and twenty-five. Got it. But that'll only, yeah, be an increase of a little under two thousand. Something.
And finally on here is the twenty twenty-four projection. This is really just us guessing where we think we're going to end the year. Uh, and all the changes you see below are really just actuals coming in.
And these are revenues. Is that right?
Partially, they're a little bit of both. The, what is that, ten-digit accounts are expenditures, and then your six-digit accounts are going to be revenues. So your big ones you see in there, probably the biggest one I saw was the real estate transfer assessment. You just keep seeing more and more of those lots selling. Um, so we didn't really budget much there, but as the actuals come in, we keep updating that projection and, you know, I can't really estimate how many lots or homes are going to sell.
It's a reminder of how powerful that would be if we had it on all lots, because that's only for a tiny little fraction. That's less than one percent of properties in town are subject to that. It's it's Keeter Grove and it's like a couple annexations where we got that because they offered it. And it, yeah, it adds up. It's real money.
Right. I think we have about five sold there so far. And everything else, yeah, it's just actuals coming in and just updating, um, the projection as that goes. Really what that does is kind of provide us with a ending fund balance of where we think we're going to end twenty twenty-four, which kind of puts us in a bigger picture for twenty twenty-five. But, you know, if there's any questions there, I can dive into that.
Those are the only changes. Was there anything anybody had on their mind that, um, the next time we see this, we're going to be being asked to approve it?
I just double-checked the wapo request. And for whatever it's worth, it's nine thousand and eighteen dollars for dues and ten thousand for the A N S, which is the
What do you have that on? Is that an email?
Yeah.
Can you send it to me? Just so it's at the top of my
Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else that's either missing or that we want to discuss?
Well, I don't know where this, I don't know where this would go, but, um, we just talked about a missed little finance workshop. Well, I don't know where this, I don't know where this would go, but um we just talked about municipal finance workshop. I don't know where the money comes from to do that. Okay.
Be like DOLA or something. It might not cost.
It might be CML, we may be able to get it done through CML.
But I just don't want us to go, oh, we didn't budget for that. And the whole kind of housing needs assessment piece, now that potentially comes from the fund, but I don't want to assume that it does. Um and the timing might not be next year, but it could be. If we're gonna potentially get one, two, three money for over there, we would need an assessment.
Well, I'm wondering, you know, we had a housing needs assess, portable housing needs assessment in two thousand and eighteen, which was updated last year by Artspace as part of that project because we needed it in order to apply to TAF. So I want to take a look at that.
They're very specific. So my understanding, I was just on a call today, is a lot of people's older assessments are not getting approved. That doesn't mean they can't change them, but.
I'm just wondering how big of an update it was.
I just want to make sure there's money to do that.
Right, right.
Anything else? My one request and Lauren and I discussed this today is um uh you know, unfortunately, we didn't get the GOCO grant for the pool. Hopefully, everybody saw that in the weekly update. Um yeah, we were not successful there. So um when we have an update on the pool and when we see the budget next, I just want to see the real numbers for, you know, we approved a GMP um with the contractor and we approved the use of the recreation sales and use tax fund um to cover that. And so I think we need to adjust our projections for potential fundraising and get very real about what that fund balance is gonna look like after those expenditures.
I did, um after you and I spoke this afternoon, Ben, I did go talk to Eric about that. Um and also about December third and having that update, but Greg and I haven't had a chance to talk about it yet, but.
I just think I what I'd like to see is that in the budget that we approve that in fund balance reflects an assumption like that we don't raise another dollar in fundraising after, you know, December thirty first. And whatever we've got in here for that revenue, it's there, but we we need to be ready to pay for all that and, you know, we've signed a contract. So I just want to see that reflected here and not be kind of surprised by it later.
And you know, I didn't announce this before in my manager's um report, but uh I know that you are aware of this, Ben, but in the last fundraiser that we did um with Kiko from Sopers Liquors, um we raised ninety seven thousand additional dollars. So that was a very good.
In like two hours. That's pretty good.
Can I interrupt really quick? I just want to say that on that full note, um when they come to us with an update on where we are budget-wise, especially in light of that news about the grant, is it possible that we can ask the WEMBER to give us a risk analysis? Like where we are on the project, that's something they should be able to provide us so that we have all the information going into that budget conversation.
We can ask for that, right?
Yeah, but I but that is not what you were talking about having having is part of this budget. So I, yes, we absolutely can. I have a couple of questions on that, Jess, that I'll shoot you in an email.
I just want to make sure that if we're if we're talking about budgeting at all, we know where the risks are. So I think it should be a conversation that happens around or in parallel to this budget approval for twenty twenty five.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Jess. Any other budget items you wanted to make sure were included or updated before we see a final?
No, thanks.
All right, well, I'm not seeing any other questions. Greg, was there anything else you wanted our feedback on tonight?
Nope, just FYI, I'm going to conference next week. And then following that, I'll be out on vacation, visiting my family. So I'll be out pretty much two weeks starting on the nineteenth.
Okay. It seems like we're in good shape though for a. It's felt like a really smooth process so far, so thanks for your work and and coming in right as we were getting started or or already underway with this and Lauren for keeping it on track. Okay.
Just a quick thing, uh because WEMBER was brought up. I saw the monthly report. That's great. And there was mention of a, the review, the proposed design modifications to the approved pool building facade. Is there any way we can see those?
I'm sorry, say that again, Colin. I think I just didn't hear you.
That's okay.
When are we gonna see?
Funny, we were just, um I just put it on for December third.
Great, thank you.
Okay, well, I think that brings us to the end of our meeting. So next week, um we have a work session with P and Z. Um so be thinking about any topics you want to discuss. If you want to shoot those my way, I'll add them to the agenda, but we can also bring them up in real time. Um we'll get an update from Garfield Clean Energy that'll be pretty brief and I think the meat of that meeting is gonna be a town center update. So Andrew from our space is gonna be here in person. I think we need to really dive deep into where we are with kind of the phase one concept. And then where are we with the rest of those phases and what do we need to do? We're approaching uh New Year's Eve will be three years since we've got that property donated to us. And so, you know, we knew it would take a while, but it's uh wish it didn't take this long.
And I think, I don't know, that municipal finance update that we might learn some things next week for that to where it may not be entirely a municipal finance thing, like what is the public-private partnerships out aspects in this or like? I think that's where we really need to start looking more.
And that's what I think we had hoped that Artspace would bring to us was all that kind of stuff because that's their area of expertise.
And they might be able to help us with more of that. I don't know.
I hope so. Um the other item I just noticed is on the next week is um just a discussion of our kind of, you know, we talked a little bit about Bob's Rules of Order, but we didn't get to um like adding items to the agenda. Um Ross had a concern about how we're notified when something like the crime that happened last weekend happens in the community, so we can just, we'll take thirty minutes or so. So, you know, ideas on that too about just how we function as a board, um open to all ideas. Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else for the good of the order?